Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I forgot it. Plus, you can't get in there without the...
Good morning, and welcome to San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, silent reflection or silent prayer in memory of former United Way President Andy Prokop, who passed away on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. Thank you. Supervisor Dollywall, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under your word, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of the Board, can you take role, please?
Sure. Supervisor Guardia.
Present.
Supervisor Dollywall.
Present.
Supervisor Ding.
Here.
Supervisor Rickman.
Here.
And Chair Canepa.
Thank you. So, at the request of Public Works and County Council, the Board is asked to continue the nine a.m. public hearing, number one pertaining to imposition of AB nine thirty-nine, the implementation fees to the second hearing in February. Ask Board members if there's any questions or comments at this time. Hearing done, I'll open the public meeting. So, at this time, do we need to open it up for public comment, or we're going to continue it? Because we have a comment card from Mike Hagan.
You could open the public comment, but you've indicated an intention to continue it, so I don't know if the public...
Supervisors, we're respectfully requesting the matter go over to the February eleventh hearing for the reasons that we're still in discussions with Mr. Kieran on the background of this matter, having just received this information in the last week on the subject. And we're in continuing discussions with Mr. Kieran on the process and the procedure to accomplish this particular item.
Okay, thank you. So, before we have a first and a second, do we need to close the hearing, or do we need to ask for a first and a second to postpone?
Well, just through the chair, pointing clarification, it's the department's recommendation, as well as mine, that this be continued to February twenty fifth. So, I know, instead of February eleventh, so that would be our recommend, that would be our recommendation. You can now close the public hearing and make a motion, if you wish.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone.
And a second?
Second.
And could I clarify which date you're requesting to postpone?
To February twenty fifth.
Thank you.
So postponing to February...
I'm just trying to prove I'm listening today.
Thank you for listening. So, we have a first and a second. Can we do roll call? Motion passes five to zero to postpone until February twenty fifth. Thank you. So, at this time, we will go to proclamations. Clerk of the Board.
Thank you, Chairman. Our first proclamation this morning is to proclaim every third week of February as Black Infant Health Week in San Joaquin County, and I would like to invite Angela Egbahtlam, Case Manager Supervisor, Lori Mercer, MCAH Director, and the Black Infant Health Program Team to the podium, as I read this proclamation, which states, "Whereas black babies have higher rate of infant mortality, low birth weight, and prematurity than any other ethnic group; and whereas black birthing people at all income levels and social statuses experience worse birth outcomes than any other ethnic groups; and whereas the California Department of Public Health Black Infant Mortality Report of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one states that black infant mortality rate in San Joaquin County is eleven point fifty-one per one thousand compared to the state average of eight point fifty-one per one thousand; and whereas the California Black Infant Health Program aims to improve healthy black, health among black birthing people and infants by empowering pregnant and birthing people to make healthy choices for a brighter future. Now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim every third week of February as Black Infant Health Week in recognition and honor of the Black Infant Health Program staff for their dedicated work to the African-American black birthing people population and the San Joaquin County community presented this fourteenth day of January two thousand and twenty-five." I apologize, presented this twenty-eighth day of January two thousand and twenty-five. Chair Canepa?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Who would like to speak? I mean, when I look at the statistics for this, this is very alarming to me. The one thing is, when we do get statistics like this, how are we going to make it better? You know what I mean? Because that gap is not good in our community. So, you guys have a moment to say what we're going to do and how we're going to fix this, and whoever would like to speak first. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chair Canepa, CAO, and County Council. I'm Renee Sensary, Public Health Director, and this morning I have maternal, child, and adolescent health programs with me, along with our Black Infant Health Coordinator, Angela Abuchalam, who has a few words.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisor and Chair Canepa. My name is Angela Abuchalam. I am the coordinator for Black Infant Health Program. Being here this morning on behalf of San Joaquin County Public Health Services and Black Infant Health Program, we, it is a privilege. We extend our sincere gratitude for this opportunity to speak. Do you know, in California, one in seven black infants are born prematurely or with low birth weight? Sadly, black infants are more than twice as likely as infants from other ethnic groups to die before their first birthday. This stark disparity persists regardless of socioeconomic status, highlighting the systemic injustice that significantly imparts black families. In San Joaquin County, the black infant mortality rate is eleven point fifty-one per thousand births, significantly higher than the state average of eight point five fifty-one per one thousand births. This local observation of Black Infant Health Week seeks to bring critical public and professional attention to these challenges while advocating for black infant health, for black infants and black women's health and well-being. Proclaiming every third week of February as Black Infant Health Week in San Joaquin County aligns with the mission of the Black Infant Health Program to enhance the health of black women and infants by empowering families to make informed, healthy choices for a brighter and more fair future. Thank you for your time, for standing with us in this vital effort to raise awareness and save black infant lives. Your support is invaluable as we work forward, building a better and more just, just community for all. I thank you. We thank you. I share. And to answer your question, you know, the things we are trying to, to accomplish is actually to build a champion between our providers and the community, and to educate them about these significant numbers we have, you know, in our county, that more babies are dying. If we can educate them to simply listen to our participants, to black women, when they are complaining, for them to listen and actually help these women, we might save lives. And also to bring the awareness to the community where they could come to our program, get educated. In our program, we have the public nurse, we have the family advocate, and we all work together to teach these women, to empower them so they can actually advocate for themselves when they're in the hospital, they can tell the doctor, no, I don't need cessation, no, I don't need this medication, I need second opinion. And we're trying to educate them by an evidence-based curriculum, which teaches them varieties of topic from labor and delivery, from relationship. The goal is actually to, the whole, to, to help these women in a whole, for themselves and their family, not just the individual, but for all the family. And it's something I need help, we need help, you know, to spread the news, and I believe we can do this if we work together.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? I think, I think what the main goal is, obviously, building trust and empowering.
Yes.
Are the two things that we need to do. And CAO Regallo helped me get health on the Board's goals, and this fits perfectly into that, you know? So, I always look at outcomes based, you know? We throw a lot of money at programs, and how they work, and what are the outcomes? So, hopefully, in the future, we can do that. We can actually dig, dig deep into this and see what we do and how we do it. Obviously, we have the clinics, we have the county hospital, we have partners in the community, CMCC, and lots of other partners that we work with. And I think it's important that we treat people of color with dignity and respect, also to get those numbers up through education and outreach. And I think those are the most important parts of how we do it and how we do it collectively. So, at this time, since nobody else wants to speak, I will go to Supervisor Rickman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, thank you for being here this morning, as you mentioned, you know, bringing awareness and education, you know, everybody's watching, and, you know, our goal is to save lives, and of course, save the lives of our, our mothers and our, and our babies. So, thank you very much, and God bless you guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Supervisor Ding.
Good morning, and welcome.
Thank you.
I, I hope the goal, and, and I think you addressed it at the end, and I was, I was hoping you'd get there. I, I would hope that our, our main focus, this community sometimes spends a lot of time talking about what the problem is, rather than getting to the root of the problem, and, and you did at the end, about educating the community, and exactly what they need to do to have a healthy baby and staying on them, and, and number two is, you have to have an advocate in this system. I found that out the hard way here about two months ago. And that is very important, because you're not dealing with just the medical profession, you're dealing with insurance companies, insurance companies, and, you know, they only want to do so much so they don't get sued, or they, you know, the insurance company reimburses them, et cetera. But I, I hope advocacy should be the, the main priority, and then making sure that they, they have advocates once they get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ding. Vice Chair Dollywall.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. These numbers are indeed alarming, and I want to thank each and every one of you for, you know, bringing it to this body. It's going to create an awareness, it definitely will. And I look forward to working with all partners to support and empower the county and outside organizations so that we can make a difference. May God bless our black mothers and their babies, and I hope these numbers get better.
Thank you. We truly appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Guardia.
When I saw that today it was going to be the recognition, I did a little homework myself, and I'm glad that you answered, actually, some of the questions that I had, that what we're doing as a county to advocate for, for our, our families that are entering childhood, you know? One thing that I didn't hear was, I think, as a county and as a, as a community, I think we need to do a better job of advocating more diversity in our, in the medical field, because I feel like when there's more diversity, our young, pregnant females will, will have more support and more trust in the help that they're seeking. And I, and I believe that we need to lean on the families and friends of our, our pregnant women to advocate for them to get the proper care that they need and follow up with them to make sure that they're having healthy babies. But thank you for all you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just to add more, when I say session, we actually have twenty classes, ten prenatal and ten postpartum classes, and these classes do help them, empower them, for them to be able to advocate for themselves. And sometimes our nurses are there with them at the clinic, at the hospital, our family advocate is there with them if they want to go back to school. We're really doing a great job to really empower these women.
And then Sarah Schweitzer from Stanislaus State had sent, I guess there's going to be a forum. I'm not sure, so I'll put that on my website when I get it, because I saw it, and I meant to print it, and I didn't, but hopefully, we can get that information out so that more people can attend and learn, so.
Yes.
Thank you, guys, for your advocacy. We really appreciate it. This time, the board could come down for a photo.
We also help them mentally. We have mental services, too.
Perfect. Thank you. At this time, at this time, real quick, can you, we'll give you an extra minute. Armando, can you please translate for that, real quick? And I, I, just, just the gist of what it was, and I mean...
I'm surprised that there's not a translator there.
Wait, one second, one second.
Yes.
Excuse me. So, it's exciting to say, Clerk of the Board, that we obviously have somebody that is bilingual to be able to help in the future. I don't know how we're going to go about that, because when he just spoke that long, it's hard unless you break it up and have somebody translate.
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to give an extra minute to Armando here and see what that was. Sunny Dollywall was first up. You had a question or comment?
This has been our best.
Okay.
Yes.
And I do want to say, Chair, real quickly, that it can be requested in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
And if we can accommodate, we absolutely would like to accommodate that in the future.
Okay, so you can have an extra minute, because you did, I mean, obviously, it was his time, and if you could...
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, so basically, what he's saying is that, that there's, that the community is scared. There's, there, he stated that, that he would like for the Board of Supervisors, the, all, all, the mayor and all city officials to, to, he's inviting the county officials to go out into the field to see what's happening. He's inviting the county officials to go out into the field to see what's happening. Right now, you know, produce is not getting picked. There's not a lot of resources. We have right now... How many? We have these little red cards that we're passing out, right? And basically stating their constitutional rights. And we have nowhere to print them up. I mean, they only gave us 250 and we have about... We have this one... He's talking about from Bakersfield all the way to Stockton.
Let me give... I'm speaking not very well English, but I will try. I bring to you, Board of Supervisors, the concern, the panic in our streets, in the fields, in the stores where... In the schools of our community. And we are requesting your leadership and first let us know what is happening. People is not going to shopping. People refuse to taking their children to the schools. People are refusing to go to drive to work Bay Area local farms. So concerning the immigration rate, not all are criminals. We have historic in this county, the first braseros coming in 1942 to this place and was a great program of families coming legal to work in the Second World. So now that family like me, my father was brasero, requesting you your leadership because not all are illegals, but the fear affecting all brown people and other citizens or other origin. So we are requesting your leadership. Please let us know what we can do together. We have limited resources. I am having meeting in the fields, meeting in the houses, meeting in the community to spread the word about their constitutional rights. So we don't have the resources. I don't know what you can do. I was hoping the sheriff do a statement more united in the community. He do a statement regarding this issue, but we want to cooperate with all the law enforcement and all the county agencies, like a united community in all our San Joaquín County. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Luis.
Ready? My turn?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to make a... Gentlemen, if you'd come back down here, please. This is not a political board. We are a nonpartisan board.
Yes, sir.
And which is a good thing because we don't deal in hearsay. We deal in facts because we make decisions that affect everybody's life. And right now, we have a very politically in charged environment because of this issue. You know, I had teachers outraged because they were storming the schools in Chicago. And then we find out that the reason ICE went into the schools was talk to the kids who were being molested so that they could go arrest the sex predators. But that's not what's being reported. You said you wanted us to go out to the fields. Are either of you labor workers or contractors? Because I talked to three farmers this weekend because I've got people beating on me about the scared community out there. I talked to two labor contractors. Actually, it's just the opposite. They are asking... They're begging the farmers for more work. There's not enough work for them. And the number one person... Group of individuals that are turning in illegals right now are those that have been in this country working in those fields year after year about competition. So I do want to help, okay? And we do need to make sure that those that are here that are working and hardworking...
Superintendent. I'm concerned we don't have this agenda, so... Maybe in public, in your comments.
I will end up... But this is important. This is extremely important because we want to make sure that the people of this country are protected regardless of the color of their skin. But we can't do it if everyone's... Those little pieces of paper are heading out. Are you scaring them or are you comforting them? You mentioned about the sheriff. I think the sheriff must have done a great job because he pissed off both sides. He's trying to do his job. Everybody's trying to do the job. I would like the names of the 50 workers so that I can sit down and talk to and help them. I'd like to talk to the labor contractors you're talking to because I want to make sure everybody in this community feels safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next up, Armando Rodriguez. Yeah, so I know... I don't know why he took Luis's... No, 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 he's already spoke. That's fine. You... That's... He took Luis's time and we gave extra for translation. So next up would be David Chen.
Morning. First issue is, at San Joaquín General Hospital, we have medical carts called Wows or workstations on wheels. These units range in price from a low of $6,000 up to $15,000 per unit. The problem we have applies to these units, but also to a lesser degree to other computer equipment. A few years ago, the decision was made to change the responsibility for the equipment from each department to the IT department. I understand the part of that decision because it stopped departments from ordering items that didn't work or fit into our systems. But it allowed the departments to have no responsibility or accountability for those pieces of equipment. The previous way was that if an item was abused or not taken care of and maintained as directed, the cost of replacement was charged back to the department's cost center. That made sure that the department heads, managers, users had the duty to take care of what they were using. This has changed and since then, things get destroyed on a regular basis. In just the last six to eight months, over $100,000 worth of Wows have been destroyed. In the last two year... Two and a half years, it was over half a million dollars' worth of equipment. I have gone up the chain of command from my immediate supervisor to the CIO, then the CEO. No accountability or responsibility is enforced. When I spoke to the CEO, his words were, "How much does it cost to keep a nurse?" As if asking them to have professional responsibility for what they need to do their job is too much to expect. It is... The second issue is that Community Works Cerner Medical Software, when it was decided to adopt such software, we had the choice of two products, Epic and Cerner. We were shown both full versions. When we thought we were adopting Cerner, it was later found out we hadn't. The county had decided to use Community Works because it was initially cheaper. I was in the meeting with Community Works people when they said they didn't know why this product was chosen, as Community Works wasn't designed for a hospital of our size. Since then, it has never worked right. I saw that we had almost $5 million set aside for any issues on the changes. We blew through that money in less than six months. We're still wasting money on a program that isn't made to be used for a place like our hospital and we're pouring money down a bottomless pit trying to fit a square peg in a round hole to the tune of millions of dollars, which is now ironic as nurses in SEIU are in the midst of contract negotiations when the county says there is no more money. But it's just fine to waste millions of dollars on Community Works Cerner and hundreds of thousands, up to a million dollars, of destruction of needed equipment that is used to care for such patients and the information that they have. Something needs to be done about this lack of accountability and responsibility immediately, unless you want to say in front of the public that wasting and destroying such equipment and wasting taxpayer dollars is the accepted way you see as being elected stewards of our money. Thank you.
Thank you, David Chen. CEO Regalo, can somebody be in touch with this gentleman so that we can get some further information, please?
Yes, I'll ask for his name.
Thank you. Next up, Pat Barrett. And after that, Molly Watkins.
Are you on? Yep.
Okay, all right.
There's no green button. Good morning, everybody. Real quick, some of you know me, some of you don't know me as well. But 49 years ago, I went into a program called Codependency. 35 years this April, I went into a alcohol and drug recovery program. Today, I work in substance abuse and mental health recovery. I just want to educate everybody on a couple of facts. I remember several years ago, we were talking about the unhoused and you had commented to me, "You know, Pat, we really appreciate you coming up here and telling us because we don't have boots on the ground and we don't know unless folks out there come in and talk to us." And I said, "Okay, you know, I can talk to you all day about stuff out there." The bottom line is this. In our county and around the world, there is a really ugly drug going around. It's called fentanyl. And there's a few more that go along with it. People are lacing drugs with it. Couple months back, I called up my public defender that defended me 30 something years ago and I... We were in conversation because I always talk to him every now and then. And I said, "You know, four years ago, I ran for the city council." And he said, "What?" And I said, "Yeah." And he goes, "No way." And I go, "Yeah." And he goes, "You know, it's things like that that makes my job worth it." And I said, "But you know what? It's your job that gave me the second chance, okay, to be who I am today." I'm not talking about codependency. I'm talking about second chance. We talked about infant immortality this morning. There's other things that go along with it. CPS, foster care, parents that die. And I need everybody to understand that when you... We bring harm reduction to drug addicts and alcoholics. It's called attraction, not promotion. It's giving those people that are still out there hurting that chance to realize, "I could have died. I need to turn my life around." I don't want everybody to freak out saying, "Oh, God, we're being codependent, you know, we're okay in their drug addiction." That's not true. That's giving CPR to somebody. That's giving CPR to somebody that by accident got a hold of something that was laced with the wrong drug. And it's giving them the chance to say, "I really need help. I really need recovery. I really need to deal with my kids, my wife, my husband, my mom, my dad, my sister, my brother." And giving them that second breath to say, "I believe in myself and I need help." And I just really want everybody here to really think about being supportive towards harm reduction. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Carla, are you wanting to wait to... And last time, I said your name right and you didn't praise me for that, so I was kind of offended that I said Hunee and then you didn't, after all the mispronunciations. But it's okay, I'll get over it. Greg Dietrich, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Greg Dietrich, CEO for Community Medical Centers. I'm here to discuss consent item number two, appointments to the Health Commission, specifically the community representative position 3302.1. Community Medical Centers, we have 134,000 Medicaid assigned lives. We're currently the largest primary care system for the Health Plan of San Joaquín with currently 104,559 of their lives assigned to us. See more than 115,000 unique patients every year, 444,000 patient care visits annually, have 28 service locations, 26 of those here in San Joaquín County. Offer full scope primary care, pediatrics, OB-GYN, dental, mental health, substance use, podiatry, optometry, and chiropractic services. The budget of $145 million for the current fiscal year and over 1,100 staff. Operate the only medically managed sobering and detox services within the county and have a 24/7 mobile crisis response team for behavioral health and substance use issues. But I think most of you know me from the 10 years I served as the Director of the San Joaquín County Healthcare Services. And I think I served with integrity and got a lot done. But I have more than 40... Pardon me, more than 30 years of healthcare experience. 17 as an executive leader in the public sector, providing services to the medical population. Was the Chair of the Health Commission for 10 years. Was a member of their both their Human Resources and Finance Committee for that entire time. chaired three of their three-year strategic planning efforts. Formed an ad hoc community reinvestment committee that's allocating $100 million back into the community. Drove the use of the Health Plan of San Joaquín to facilitate the fiscal and construction feasibility studies for our aspirational county's BWOL campus that culminated the last time I was before you with a $200 million grant submission to the state of California. Currently, I'm the President of Health Force Partners, working to create a local pipeline of allied health professionals to grow them and keep them here in the county. Been a long-serving member of the Probations Community Corrections Partnership and worked early on with Health Plan of San Joaquín and St. Joe's to the St. Mary's Pathway Noncongregate Shelter project that is coming to fruition. And I think I'm well-known and respected in the community. And I think we have lots of opportunities to partner with the Health Plan, Community Medical Centers, and get a lot done. And I respectfully asking that this item potentially be pulled for a discussion and consideration of my appointment to the commission. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Aurelia Walker, please. And after that, Erica Peña López.
Good morning, Board. My name is Aurelia Walker. I've been a caregiver for IHSs for my grandson since 2019. I'm also a proud member of SEIU 2015 and the founder of Mike's Playground, a nonprofit organization dedicating, serving special need children, young adults, their families, and their caregivers. Before becoming IHS caregiver, I had 33 long years in a career in the insurance industry. When I retired from my former career, I didn't stop working. Instead, I became my grandson's caregiver to prevent him from having to move into group home while my daughter had the opportunity to work a good-paying job with benefits. After becoming a caregiver, I needed to make my home more accessible by building and lift... Excuse me, by building and lifting my grandson up and down the stairs. The services and resources we needed weren't available, which made it challenging to make my... To ensure my grandson to have a safe, familiar, and accessible place to live. To bridge the gap, I made personal sacrifice out of love and necessity. The gap in my system made... In the system made me angry and still make me angry. But instead, surrendering to frustration, I channeled my anger into something beautiful. Now I use my IHS income to build my organization, which creates inclusive, accessible playgrounds where all children feel a sense of belonging while simultaneously building the community spaces for their dedicated caregivers. I know I'm not the only caregiver in this room who made sacrifices to keep families together or to make communities a better place. This is what every single IHS worker does every day. You all have an opportunity right now to make our community a better place by raising wages for IHS workers who bring empathy, beauty, and value into our lives. I know what my legacy will be. What will yours be? Thank you.
Thank you, Aurelia. Erica Peña López.
Good morning, Board. My name is Erica Peña López and I've been an IHSs worker in San Joaquín for over one year and a proud member of our SEIU Union. I speak on behalf of over 8,000 IHSs workers in San Joaquín with stories and financial struggles just like mine. I currently provide care for my grandmother who needs 24-hour care due to dementia. I love the work I get to do every day and today I'm here to tell you why IHSs workers like me urgently need a wage increase in our next union contract. In June 2024, my grandmother and I were evicted from our home. I had just transitioned from my former career as a plumber into my current role as my grandmother's full-time caregiver before struggling to parent. For the past seven months, we have been staying with family while waiting for the next available affordable housing unit in Stockton. Finding a safe and secure home for my grandmother is essential to providing her the high-quality long-term care that she needs and deserves. But in order to afford the rent and mortgage in San Joaquín, IHSs workers need a more higher and livable wage. I urge you to please pass a strong union contract. I urge you to please pass a strong union contract for IHSs workers. The health and safety of San Joaquin's older adults, people with disabilities, and long-term care workers, nearly eighteen thousand community members, depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nate Knott, please. And Bob Johnson's on deck.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Nate Knott, 1021 West DeCayshia Street in Stockton, California. And I'm speaking personally, not for some of the nonprofits and community-based organizations that I'm involved with. And I'm just gonna make a few general comments. Some of what I, what I'm going to say has probably already been said to some extent, but I just want to get my own comments on the record. I come from French Camp originally, and then Manteca's, where I grew up as a kid, and went to Chico State. I mention that because I've, thank you. And once the radio voice of Chico State sports. I mention that because I grew up around farms and almond orchards and truck farming, which is tomatoes and onions and potatoes and various things. I have tremendous respect for the amazing dedication and hard work of migrant farmworkers, whether documented or not. Rather than mass deportations, I wish this country would get serious about making a proper legal system of immigration for honest, hard-working people, not scaring families. I'm also spent sixteen years as a public school teacher. I've had three unusual parallel overlapping careers. And it horrifies me the thought of ICE raids on school campuses. I'll just leave that comment right there. I just don't think that's what this country is all about. If we're gonna conduct this kind of behavior nationwide and scare the hell out of millions of people and families, we should put a shroud on the Statue of Liberty. Most of our, most of our high-level government leaders have been immigrants at some point in the not-that-recent past. So with that having been said, I have a whole separate issue I want to bring up briefly. Oh, one more comment. I just want to say that it's gonna be interesting to see what happens to our food prices if we can't farm our crops, and we can't farm our crops if they're not harvested. And you need dedicated workers to do that. And I don't see lines of people running out to the farm fields right now to sign up for those jobs. We also need plumbers, electricians, and contractors. And again, many of those people fall into the, fall into the category of documented workers or undocumented workers. So let's make it legal, rather than going after people who might be illegal. On a separate issue, real briefly, there's a Greyhound, there's a rural transportation and Greyhound crisis in this country. Many of you, I know I spent seventeen years at San Joaquin RTD. I also worked for Trialways Bus Company before that, managed terminals in San Francisco and Oakland, worked for a charter bus company in Sacramento. So I have a longstanding experience in the bus business. For many of you that don't know this, the current state of Greyhound is that they don't have enough drivers, and that their real estate arm of their company is sucking assets out of them to close terminals all over the United States. They're literally picking up and dropping off people's sidewalks in Cincinnati and Cleveland. The other day, a driver got off the bus, said the relief driver will be there in fifteen minutes. It was nine hours later, and I think that was on the sidewalk in Allentown, Pennsylvania. I'm gonna come back with more information on the issue and proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Bob Johnson, please.
First time I've been here, gentlemen. So do I hit any buttons, anything here? To start talking? My name's Robert Johnson. I was born and raised in Ody, California. I wanted to talk about national debt, currency devaluation, currency reset, and the pension plans. Does anybody here have an idea what happens when they reset the currency to the pensions? The value of the pensions? When I got out of college, Chico State, nineteen ninety-nine, ounce of gold was two, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Last week, it hit twenty-seven ninety? That ounce of gold is the same. The dollar's getting destroyed in value. And the last thing I would ever want is for somebody to work here thirty years, thirty-five years, retire, and get a worthless paycheck. So I would like to bring up what the central banks were doing last year at the highest level ever. They were purchasing physical gold and taking possession of that gold, because gold is money. Everything else has counterparty risk. That dollar in your pocket has counterparty risk. The government's promises has counterparty risk, that they'll pay. A good example would be being able to cash out for a lump sum, right? At the city of Stockton, used to be able to do that. They got rid of that. They defaulted on that into bankruptcy. So anyways, I don't know if you've, I don't believe there's any pension fund here in the nation that has taken, or taken a small amount of their money that they get from their taxation or the retirees, and start building a gold depository or a gold asset, one percent, two percent, three percent, that'll maintain its purchasing power in the time of currency crisis, because we're gonna go through it. It's coming. They're gonna make the dollar worthless. You're gonna go to bed on a Friday, you're gonna wake up on a Monday, and they will lop off the zeros in your bank account. By that time, President Trump, Kamala Harris, Vice President Harris, Scott Besant, the Secretary of Treasury, they all want a devalued dollar. How do you plan for your retirement when the currencies keep getting devalued? I don't have anything else to say. I would like to think that the county commission would look into it to say, hey, can we start buying physical gold, taking possession of it, holding it within the county, outside of the government? Because they're doing it in Texas at the Texas Endowment Fund for the university. They took possession of a billion dollars' worth of gold, they brought it within Texas, put it in the depository, and they did that when it was fourteen-hundred an ounce.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. We can't respond back, so thank you, sir.
Just a point of, there is a point of, just a point of information. The Retirement Board does have a seat at the table. Supervisor Guardia is the new member, so you could find out what percentage of the portfolios and that.
I mean, you have to take physical possession.
We can't, sir, sir, thank you. Thank you for your comments. If you'd like to reach out, we have deferred comp meetings and also.
I'll reach out to Mr. Ding.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
All right.
Anybody remaining in the audience who would like to speak? Please come forward and state your name, unless you have a card filled out.
My name is Michael Hawkins. I'm a registered nurse. I have been a registered nurse since the nineteen hundreds. I have a master's degree in nursing. I have a master's degree in healthcare administration. I've worked in multiple states and multiple environments. I have lived in Lathrop for the last fourteen years of my life. I've raised my family in Lathrop. I expected to live the rest of my life in this county. Currently, our healthcare system does not support that dream. I do not believe that we have healthcare organizations, hospitals, that are gonna build here for us. Kaiser, Sutter, Dameron just changed ownership a week ago. I believe it's going to be our responsibility as a county to provide for our people in the future. As a nurse, I applied to San Joaquin General Hospital last summer. I'm a staff nurse on the two-C unit. I've engaged with my leadership in attempts to better the environment. I've asked for permission to use the American Association of Critical Care Nurses Healthy Work Environment Initiatives. I've been told no, and to go ask the board. So today, I am here to ask the board for permission to initiate a Healthy Work Environment Initiative. The framework comes from the American Association of Critical Care Nurses. I would also like permission to donate thirty-six hours per pay period of my own wages for the next three months to engage other staff who cannot afford to participate in committees and subcommittees to help me do this work. I will also ask for permission to initiate a feasibility study to look at alternative ways to generate revenue on my unit. I've asked my leadership. They say it is not possible, and no, and go ask the board. I've asked my leadership to buy computers for my unit. I've offered to buy three to five laptops. I was told no. I would like permission to buy three to five laptops for my unit. Nurses come to work, we don't have computers. I was told it was too expensive. It's my money. It is a donation. It is not free. It is an investment in the future of my healthcare system. Thank you.
Thank you. CEO Orgalo, Supervisor Ding and I are on the Healthcare Services Committee, so if we could look into this gentleman's requests, I think it would be well worth it. Thank you. Do you need a comic card?
Yes, because I don't know. I understand he does work at our hospital, but if that could be confirmed, because I don't have any, I, I did res, get his name, Michael Hawkins.
Yeah, we need your contact information, please. Have you good? Any others remaining in the audience that would like to speak that haven't filled out a card? Sheriff Pat Withrow.
Good morning, Chairman and the Board. I felt compelled to come down and speak and public comment, which I rarely do, but obviously these are unique times right now. And we're doing everything we can at the sheriff's office to be part of the solution, as we have been at every struggle that has been thrown at us in our first six years here at the sheriff's office. And so I just wanted people to know, we're gonna, we're gonna handle this situation. Everyone's kinda panicked right now, and we're about a week or two into this new administration, and a lot of rumors flying, as Supervisor Ding mentioned, and we want to get to the facts. And I put out a video stating what we at the sheriff's office plan to do and how we'll handle this, as we handled everything, every type of trauma that has come to our community. And we're gonna do that fairly across the board to every member of our community, and try and represent everybody's wants and desires in this. And none of us want to see people fearing for their safety or their, their families, and that breaks our hearts, as a board, I'm sure it does, and it does in law enforcement. I know myself, I know Chief McFadden has put out a statement on this, and I'm confident that the other chiefs of police in our county feel the same. Look, we're here to protect our citizens. That's what we do. And the federal government is there to enforce their laws, ICE and immigration. And they're gonna do their jobs the way that they see fit. I've heard things about quotas a day and things like that. In law enforcement, they've tried things like that in the past, and that doesn't work. They just need to go out and, and enforce the laws of our land and, and the way that they seem proper. And it sounds like they want to go after bad guys that are in our community that came here illegally. And I'm all for that, and I have had some of those bad guys deported myself, as you know. And every time I do that, I come in a public hearing once a year and explain that to my public. But I'm also here to protect the rights of every citizen inside this county, and we will do that. I'm meeting with the Farm Bureau coming up either later this week or next week, I don't know, they all run together. And I'm gonna discuss it with our farmers, what action they would like us to take, to let them know if they feel that someone is on their property illegal, they can contact us, and we will come out and talk with those people, as we would any person who came onto their property illegal. We will say, look, this farmer doesn't want you on their property. We will, I'm taking every meeting I possibly can with any group in our community to let them know our stance on this. And I've reached out, I've got the Hispanic Business Council coming up, and I'm gonna reach out to the churches and nonprofits, and anybody who wants me to come speak and let them know where we're at and, and what their rights are and things like that, I'm gonna do that. And I will hope that our federal government and their officers will use compassion and restraint and do their jobs properly. And we will be here to protect our citizens in San Joaquin County from bad people who are in our country illegally. And good people are here to do their jobs and raise their families. So we're here for them. We do not want them to be victimized. I know I got the red light. We do not want them to be victimized. Please call us. Continue to call local law enforcement if, if you are being victimized. There are gonna be people out there, bad actors, acting like they are ICE or immigration. It's happened to friends of my family already in Southern California. So please, call us. We are not here, we're not here to deport you unless you are a bad person committing violent crimes against our citizens, whether they're documented or not. So we are here for everyone in our community. Contact myself or any law enforcement agency, and you can rest assured that we will deal with the crimes that are occurred, and we'll leave the immigration stuff, unless you're a bad person, to the federal government.
Thank you, Sheriff Withrow. Anybody else? Melanie, you're good? Thank you. So moving on to consent, board members, if there are any consent items they would like to pull for discussion, and we will start with Supervisor Guardia.
I think we pulled the AB 939 already.
Okay. Vice Chair Dollywall?
Let's pull item number four under General Counsel.
Supervisor Ding?
Yes. Well, he already pulled mine. Three, four, eight. Wait a minute. And twenty-four.
And last but not least, Supervisor Rickman? Done? We will start off with number three. Supervisor Ding?
Yeah, I wanted to see Mike Anderson have a heart attack, is why I've, I pulled that. Supervisor Guardia, I think you've made a, an excellent choice. He's a, he's a hard worker. He's a gentleman. He knows this process inside and out, and I just wanted to welcome, welcome him to Actually, I want Mike to tell us why he's qualified.
I do. Would anybody like to bash Mr. Anderson? I do. You're, you're a good man, Charlie Brown, and it's, it's nice to see you be Chief of Staff, so good choice, and I think he will make your office proud. So thank you, and I look forward to approving that. So, all right. Any, really, public comment? Do we need to open it up for public comment? Supervisor Guardia?
You know, when I took this position as, as living in this, in this city and county my whole life, and being involved with the Stockton Fire Department and local government, mainly city and some county stuff, you really don't know what you're jumping into when you jump in a position as a county supervisor. And so I'm excited to bring Mike on, who has a lot of institutional knowledge and can help guide me to learn my new position. And I want to thank the board also for being supportive, staff for being supportive. You know, when you run a campaign, you think you know everything, and then you actually get in a seat, there's a lot to learn. So I'm looking forward to working with everybody, and I'm excited to bring Mike on.
Perfect. Very exciting. Anybody else? Comments?
Congratulations to Mr. Anderson. Always remind me of The Matrix when I go, Mr. Anderson. And Mario, you're picking up a great person. You know, after Supervisor Patty left, I brought Mike on for, you know, my aide for about a week now, a week or two. And, you know, once I told Mike he had to grow a beard and shave his head, I mean, you should have seen the size, Mario picked him up. But Mike's done a great job, worked with him when he was with Congressman Denham and Supervisor Patty, and now you. Yeah, you're very, very fortunate to have somebody of that caliber. Actually, not just you, this whole entire board is, so congratulations.
Vice Chair Dollywall?
Same sentiments as my, my colleagues. I have known Mr. Anderson for several years, and I believe Mr. Guardia, Supervisor Guardia, made a, made a very good choice. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, it's interesting. So now he doesn't have to dress up as Darth Vader, so that's a blessing for you. But also, too, I was ready to steal him, too, but Rickman beat me to the punch, so we won't hold that. We get along well, and I think it shows the camaraderie and the partnership and, you know, up here, that, you know, he's willing to help a fellow supervisor, and I think that's what it's all about. So good choice, and congratulations, Mr. Anderson, at the end of this consent vote. So, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. So very exciting. Would you like to speak?
There we go.
Huh? He's a man of few words. You want to tell him to speak?
He's still his boss until, what, 5 o'clock?
Right. Anyway, thank you, and good choice, Supervisor Guardia. So, okay, moving on to number four. Vice Chair Dollywell?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, there's nothing more important than making sure that we protect our democratic principles and our institutions. And that starts with ensuring that our elections are free and fair. But I'm a little bit concerned about approving these letters that we don't have yet without reading them. It's a very important issue. I would like to request to continue this item to the next meeting so that we can get the letters and we read them. That way, they have the most powerful impact that we are looking for.
Okay. Counsel, so we have comments on this. Supervisor Ding also wanted to pull this. So what would you like me to do here? Allow Supervisor Ding the floor and a continuance? What's the?
You can have a continuance until we speak.
Okay, right. But that's what I'm saying. No, I'm just asking for clarification because he wants to see the letters, and you also wanted to pull this. So what's the procedure?
Supervisor Dollywell may make a motion to continue this to a later date, but that doesn't preclude discussion of, by the Board.
And as far as public comment? Because there's folks that wanted to speak on this.
And they should be allowed to speak as well.
Okay. All right. So would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the way our democratic process works.
I'm new at this, so bear with me.
Oh, please, you've been doing this longer than all of us combined. I respect Supervisor Dollywell's request. I put this on the agenda. We've had an election advisory committee, kind of like one of the, what is it? 18 committees you serve on. So this is one of mine. And it also works in coordination with the Elections Office. And one of the things we found, there's, there's really two issues here. One is, do we treat our election process like a coupon? Or is it really sacred? And does it mean something? It's the only thing you can pretty much do in this country without a voter ID. You can't cash a government check. You can't get into a federal building. You can't go to the, can't get on an airplane. You can't do anything. Your right to vote is sacred, and we want to make sure. The other side of it is also the cost. And so as both of you know, how long it took you to get your election returns? Well, those votes that were cast at the polling place, you had those results by midnight that night. One of the things that drug it over on and on was all the provisionals and same-day registrations and things that before five years ago were required. You had to have a voter ID. We didn't have a, you know, publisher's clearinghouse election where we mailed ballots to everybody. You couldn't show up at the polling places and register to vote without an ID and say, you know, my, my name is Ben Smith and get a ballot. It's, you know, things have changed. We're trying to bring common sense back. This, we are not standing alone here right now. There are currently three bills in the House right now. SB 3, AB 5, AB 25, that are being offered as requiring voter ID. It's not a new thing in this country. It's actually resetting to what was common sense and what worked before. Supervisor Dollywell's main concern is he hasn't seen the letters, and I respect that. We will have the letters for you next week. But pretty much, that's what they're going to say. We're addressing two issues. Are we addressing both of these issues? And one is the same-day registration. And I think they're both on, under this consent item. They're really affected the outcome of the election. The Elections Advisory Committee, and I believe my, my main goal is to make sure that voters feel that there is integrity and trust in the system. And these are two items that are causing much heartburn, shenanigans, and it's driven up our costs tremendously. And so that's why we want them addressed. I would concur with Supervisor Dollywell, because I want us to all do this together. It's hard to argue for integrity in the election system when you have a divided Board on an issue. So I would really want your support on this. So I would concur with that, and then we will get the exact printing of the letters.
You're using your time?
Yes, you have my time.
Vice Chair Dollywell?
Supervisor Ding, can we have the letters and then approve at the next meeting? I can make that motion if, if that helps.
Yes.
Okay. So at this time, we'll have public comment, and then we'll come back to the Board. Carla Huni, it's your time to shine.
Good morning, Chairman Canepa and members. And I do agree, yes, it would be nice to have the letters so you know what we're talking about here. So, and basically what Supervisor Ding said. So when COVID came around, a lot of things started changing, obviously, because people were scared. And I understand that. But as Supervisor Ding said, to go to a bar, to drive a car, to be a doctor, to have, to go hunt, to go fish, you have to have some kind of ID or a license. And like I said two weeks ago, when we went up to the Secretary of State's building in Sacramento, and she's the one that oversees the elections, you had to show ID to get in her building. I shouldn't say her, the Secretary of State's building. They're the ones that did away with this because it was, I won't go into all the semantics on it. But so what we'd like to see, and I will tell you, as I worked for, I was a poll worker in the primary and in the general election last year. And in my particular polling place, 95% of the people that came in had their driver's license out. And we could look at it, we just couldn't ask them for that. So it's just something that it makes sense to do. And then the other part is on the Secretary of State's website and also on our Register of Voters website. It says you must register to vote 14 days prior to the election. And then she, the Secretary of State puts something in that says, no, you can vote on the day. You can't vet people, you have to do it after the fact. And so that means you have to call them. If they don't answer, you send out postcards. I mean, all this process. There's nothing wrong with having it to do 14 days in advance because then it's taken care of. And you don't have to worry about the three buses that came in on the day of the election that went up to the ROV office and registered to vote, and we don't even know where they're from. So that's what this is to protect, is so we can make sure that our citizens in San Joaquin County are the ones that are actually voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Watkins?
Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, I attend all the EAC meetings. At that meeting, they vetted it. We talked about several things. The committee spent time figuring this out and coming up with the wording that came towards you. So please approve this. This is a good thing. Seeing the letter is probably even a better thing. That would be helpful. I deep in the woods here in the mud with the actual language that was set up. The election system is still broken. I mean, this isn't going to fix it, but it's one step in the right direction, and we have to go forward. So appreciate your support and your understanding that the election system has great flaws. These could help fix some of those flaws. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I mean, this is, this is how government's supposed to work. So you know what I mean? You do the people's work in public. So I'm proud to be a part of this. Do we, I have a first and a second. Do we vote on it after the rest of the consent items? Or pull this one for a separate vote?
It sounds like you should pull it for a separate vote. And if I'm, and just a point of clarification, if I'm understanding the motion, it is to continue this to the February 11th meeting with a slight modification, that being the intention to also approve letters which will have been drafted at that point.
Right, so that we see those, obviously, we'll be in the Board packet and then further discussion.
Correct.
Which, which date forward? February 11?
February 11th, with an intention to bring the letters and approve them at that time or consideration to approve at that time.
Okay. So you're, is that good language for you?
Should I make the motion now or should I wait? Now? Okay, I'll make the motion to continue this item to February 11th so that we can get the letters and read them, and then the Board can vote on.
Second.
Okay. And we're going to vote at the end, pulling this one? Or are we going to vote now?
I would, I would take the vote now on the motion.
Colonel Board, can we call for a vote? I'm sorry, I didn't ask if anybody wanted to speak. Does anybody need to speak on this? We're all good. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ding, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ding, number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff has been working diligently. Just want to make sure they're not coming after us. They've been working diligently on revenues for our parks. As the Supervisor from the First District, Supervisor Guardia's pointed out over and over again, and I've, I've, I listen, I hear, apart, you know, the existing parks, a lot of the older parks have gone, you know, to the wayside. We need to make those a priority, priority. At the same time, we've got some grand plans. Parks are something you plan now. It doesn't do any good, you know, 50 years from now if everything's paved over and say, hey, we should have put a park here. So we can't stop from looking forward in expansions, for instance, at Mickey Grove Park. I don't think a lot of people realize how much time and effort both of you have put into this and how emotional it can get on all sides. And I just wanted to say thank you and give you an opportunity to talk about some of the things in your plan, and then if Supervisor has any questions.
Okay, good morning, Chairman Canepa, Supervisors, County Counsel, Cao Regalo. Dan Wards, I'm the General Services Director. And today, thank you for pulling the items so that General Services can provide an overview of our initial plan for community parks improvement projects. I want to thank the work of our Parks Team, who goes out on a daily basis and, you know, puts up with the elements as well as the things that you'll see, some, some of the things we're looking to improve, the safety and security of our parks. And at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Assistant Director Connie Hart, who's been spearheading this project. Go ahead, Connie.
Thank you, Dan. Good morning, Chair Canepa, members of the Board. My name is Connie Hart, Assistant Director of General Services. On January 14th of this year, just your last Board meeting, your Board approved the creation of two new funds. That was brought by the CAO. The Parks Capital Outlay and the Mickey Grove Zoo Capital Outlay Funds. And you also approved the transfer of $10 million into those funds. $9 million to the Parks and $1 million to the Zoo Capital Outlay. This morning, General Services is bringing our plan and request for an increase in appropriation to start using those funds. Here, here are several pictures, and I hate to say I have many, 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 many more that are similar to this. These are in some of our community parks. They are in dire need of attention. Most are plagued with illegal dumping that takes an inordinate amount of time from our staff to clean up on nearly a daily basis. Other issues are graffiti, vandalism, and theft. This pulls staff away from their core duties of maintaining the parks. This has been a constant battle for many years. And in essence, these parks are not functional for the law-abiding community members, and we want to change that and return these parks to the communities. As you may know, most of the community parks are located in lower-income, underserved communities. And the park, in many cases, or maybe all cases, this is the only amenity that community may have. There are 11 community parks within San Joaquin County. Of those, we've identified nine, so nearly all of the community parks that are most challenged by these issues. So our primary focus is to secure these parks, these nine parks, and then to begin investing some of these funds into, into that. So as far as securing during this fiscal year, that's why we're asking for an increase in appropriations. We plan to fully fence these parks, these nine parks, provide additional lighting for security purposes, and to provide security patrols to lock and unlock and provide eyes on the parks overnight, similar to what you see in an HSA, that kind of thing where, you know, the, the, make the rounds with the security patrol. So we've got eyes on the park when illegal activity is occurring in order to call the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff has been an amazing partner and, but they can only come out when they, when they know something's happening. And community, community members are asleep. And we, and obviously, we don't have Parks folks out there at night. So that's what we're hoping that we can provide security first in working in partnership. So that'll cost about $1.25 million. And then during next year, the 2526, and we'll put this in the budget, we're, we're looking at installing the smart restrooms. You may have seen them around town in Stockton. They're the self-cleaning, controlled access kind of modular units that we put in place. We already have, we currently have, oh, I think it's $3.75 million in our current public, public improvement budget to do three of them. So these funds will allow us to do the other six. And we'll also be doing some irrigation and landscaping upgrades. And I'm excited about this. We're gonna, we've talked about partnering with the Ad Commissioner to install some community gardens in, in coordination with community members in those parks. Once they're safe, secure, and, and we're investing in the irrigation and all of that. So I'm very excited. But that's what, of this $10 million, about $7.5 million will be used specifically for these nine county parks over two fiscal years. This fiscal year, the remainder of it, and next fiscal year. The other funds, we're looking at spending roughly $9 million of the 10. So I, I talked about the, what did I say that was? $7.75 million. Some other things we're going to do with the funds this fiscal year, purchase a van for our new education program out at the zoo, and conduct a site survey for a proposed primate exhibit, which is very exciting. Get the ball rolling on that also at the zoo. We're looking at upgrading some sprinklers at Regional Sports Complex and to fully fund the purchase of an enclosed tractor and flail motor. That'll be used throughout the park system. And then in next year's budget, in addition to the $6.2 investment in the community parks from the previous slides, there'll be $900,000 to fund Phase 3. Chairman, I mean Supervisor Rickman, you'll be happy to hear that. Fund Phase 3 of the South County Park Project. So we'll continue moving that along. And then, we don't know the number yet, but somewhere in the number, neighborhood, 2, 3, 4, $100,000. We want to do a full-on master plan for the entire park system, including the zoo. So that's something that you'll see in the 2526 budget. We want to, instead of just onesie-twosie, making little decisions, let's do this, let's do this, let's get a master plan together. So we are all on the same page to cover the next decade of what we see in our park system, including the zoo. We will obviously conduct an analysis of all of our existing recreation facilities. We'll look at community needs. As you already know, we're working toward AZA accreditation for the zoo. One part of that, before we can get there, we need a master plan for the zoo. So that'll be part of this as well. Identifying funding strategies for recommended projects. And at that time, there'll be other opportunities to make similar improvements that we're, that we're undertaking now for the community parks in some of that we're, that we're undertaking now for the community parks and some of our other regional parks. As you may know, Mickey Grove and Shumway Oak are already receiving vital infrastructure upgrades as we speak. If you go out to Mickey, you're gonna see vendors out there with trenches and, and working on the irrigation systems. We're working on the well systems, and we're working on the aeration systems at the, at the Shumway Oak Lake. So all of those vital infrastructure projects are actually underway now and already fully appropriated. But we're looking to create a roadmap for the next 10 years. So at this time, General Services is recommending that your board approve an increase in the appropriations in the amount of 1,304,554 dollars in the 24, 25 Parks and Recreation Budget, with offsetting revenue coming from the newly created Parks Capital Outlay Fund. And approval of an increase in appropriations of 66,500 dollars in the 24, 25 Parks and Recreation Budget, with offsetting revenue from the Mickey Grove Zoo Capital Outlay Fund. Chair Canepa, members of the board, this concludes our presentation. Dan Wertz, the Director of General Services, and myself are available to answer any questions you may have.
Perfect, thank you for the presentation, Supervisor Ding.
Yes, thank you. I've, I've only got one question. I'm just looking at your budget and some things I think can be done simultaneously. The way the zoo operates is we have a zoological society, and there's been kind of a split over the years. I won't get into the days of our lives of, of that, but that's coming together. It's basically the community raising money from corporate sponsors, banks, everybody else, charitable foundations to fund a lot of the projects in the zoo. They need a master plan in order to go out and raise those money. It's, it's beneficial to the whole community. I guess, I'm looking at this, and is it just a matter of dollars, cents? How can we, we need, instead of waiting to do the master plan next year? That's something we can do simultaneously and get going now. And I think dollar for dollar, it'll save us money down the road because it gives the zoological society a chance to raise money. Is there a way we can work this out so it doesn't go into next year's budget?
So through the chair, I will let General Services, if you could provide us with the timeline for the master plan, and if it could be expedited.
Of course, we can, we can move things around and do anything that our work product needs us to do. So if the direction from the board is to start our work plan earlier, we just need to start preparing the documents to go out to RFP to get, you know, a vendor to start working on that master plan. So we should, we'll have to look at our budget, but we should have some internal funds to start the initial phase, to get it in draft and get it out potentially before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would, I'd like to, I don't know how we do this. I, I, a sense of the, you know, the board move forward with the budget, the way they have it laid out here. But a sense of the board, we want to get started sooner rather than later on that master plan. Correction of the board?
May, may I offer a suggestion, perhaps? If, if Dan's okay?
Well, we can, I believe we have enough, possibly enough internal appropriations to start the process, to initiate it. If we need to come back prior to the end of the fiscal year, we can come back with a separate item to appropriate additional funds if we determine we don't have enough to move the project along.
Okay. I'm satisfied with that.
Very good. Okay, Supervisor Guardia.
As you're aware, you know, in, in our last meeting, I had some questions. And, and I appreciate the time to come to my office and explain the situation. And I, I think, I think we're all on board with wanting to improve our, our community parks, which, in my opinion, you know, it's, you know, it's considered an upgrade. To me, it's a lack of maintenance for a long period of time because, you know, an upgrade is something that's new to the park. And, and security is something that I believe has to be done, and I, and I understand, and irrigation and aeration and stuff like that. But I'm looking forward to move on. I mean, our, our parks need to have working bathrooms, and I'm glad that your team has a plan to, to address that. But I think at, at some point, once we get beyond the, to me, the maintenance part of it, I, I definitely would hope that you come to us with some ideas to move forward, some actual upgrades to the parks. You know, examples, there's not a skate park on the southeast side of Stockton. You have to go to Ben Holt to go to a skate park. You know, there's, there's no water features at our parks that, you know, during our, our times where we have these cooling stations that we don't really have adequate, adequate space for, that we have the opportunity for our, our kids and their parents to use our, you know, some type of, some type of water feature at a park to cool off when it's 110 for 10 days straight. So I appreciate that, and, and I feel like, you know, that we're, have the same sentiment of wanting to improve our parks. I do got a question on the van use for Mickey's Grove. Is that gonna be available to some of our community centers? So we can start getting some of the kids that, maybe in some of the deprived neighborhoods, out to Mickey's Grove, who might not have access?
This is for our education program, and it primarily operates within the school districts. But I think that's a fabulous idea. I think that we can look, definitely look into that and see if we can coordinate some things like that with HSA, perhaps.
And, and I, I think that's a good call. One thing I'm learning that, you know, our, our community, and I might say it wrong, but our community centers, in my opinion, I've visited most, most of them. And, you know, there's, there's definitely a need for food distribution in our, in our, in our neighborhoods. But I, I really feel that's what our centers have, at least on the southeast side of Stockton, have, have turned into. And I'm glad to see that there is a relationship with the school districts right now because I, I believe they're leading the pack when it comes to like after, after-school programs. And so I think that's one little step in the right direction if we can, you know, get those vans involved in our community centers and get our kids out there to, to enjoy what the county has. Because there's a lot of kids that, from those areas that have never been out to Mickey's Grove or couldn't even afford to go to our zoo. But I appreciate all the hard work and the dedication to improving our parks.
I mean, there, also, talking about funding for the parks, there's another thing our department has to do better, General Services, is going out for grant opportunities. The state and federal government do have a lot of grants out there, but we have to be a little more proactive in identifying what we want those grants to fund. And right now, we're a little too reactionary to that. So that's an additional mechanism, instead of relying on general fund to, to pay for all these things, we can put towards replacements, improvements, or new parks in the future.
Yeah, and I, I spoke to Congressman Harder's office this last week. And that's some of the things that we're gonna talk about. I mean, when you, when you can add improvements to an area that's gonna benefit a lot of people, I, I think that's something that we could work with, with our, with Congress and Harder to achieve these goals.
Yes.
Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both, you know, very much. I mean, it's, it's great to see this agenda item here and see some of the improvements. You all know how much I love, I love parks. You know, when we speak of parks, and I know when I first got on the board, you know, a little over four years ago, and, you know, of course, the rest of the board made sure we made our community centers a priority. And, you know, you have the community parks located right next to them. And the reason this is so important for District Five, I mean, you look at District One, all their, you know, different parks and centers, and you look at District Five, we have one. We have one community center for the entire southern portion of the county. And I think it's been there since 1973. That's when I was born, right? And so these communities, centers, and these parks where they're at in the, are, are communities, you know, help folks, not just in the community, but surrounding. But also, when you go to parks and you see a park in disrepair, you know, it brings, it has a huge impact on the community. So for us going out there and making sure they're up to date, making sure they're safe for our kids and our families can come up there and play is essential. And our job now is to make sure we keep it up. You know, I don't think, maybe, I mean, why they weren't kept up in the past? I mean, that's up to speculation. But I think that this board puts premium, premiums on our parks. And also on our South County Regional Park. Again, Fifth District, of, and the southern portion of the county is the only portion of the county that does not have a regional park. And so it's great to see funding for Phase Three. I know when I was mayor, you know, I spearheaded the Legacy Field Sports Park out there toward, you know, it's just south of that location. So not only will our families and our kids be able to play in a beautiful park, but you look at the economic impact to that, what it has on the county and the surrounding community as a whole. So thank you all very much for what you're doing. Actually, I just went out to the park community, St. Larch Clover, this weekend, and my wife and I checked it out. So we appreciate it and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a perfect segue because a gentleman just reached out, and we talk about lack of things for kids to do. And he was trying to figure out where we could put a BMX track. And I, I, he was talking, City of Stockton, and I say, oh, Oak Grove. So that was the email to you. You know, because they have one in Elk Grove, they have one in Sacramento. And I think it would be a way to attract people to the community. I know that, you know, the insurance side of it is probably challenging, and the legalese side of it. But we have plenty of property out there. And I think it would be awesome if we could look at doing that. And the gentleman said he could help. He's worked with city and county. And I said, it's not as easy as just doing that. So there's processes, and I think it would be great for that area to do. You could do novice and moderate and, and the high-level BMX and give people somewhere to go. And then not only that, but they would need food and fuel and things like that that would promote businesses in our community. So I think it's a win-win to, to look into it. Oh, oh, sorry, Supervisor Rickman?
Just real quick.
I took the floor from you.
I just want to reiterate what Supervisor Ding said earlier about, you know, moving forward, that, what was it?
Plan, the plan for, yes.
Right, I mean, because you look and inflation, the way it is, prices going up every single year. So we can get it done faster, it saves money. And there are folks that talk about how much money we spend or how, how much we're gonna be spending at parks and stuff. But, you know, we spend a lot of money on, God, everything that we spend money on. And us spending money on our parks has more of an impact to more people and families and a lot of the different things that we fund in this county. So I'm, I'm all for it, and I agree with Supervisor Ding. And if we can save money pushing projects forward and getting them done as fast as possible, I know you're all busy. I would love my community centers and our, our park to be done as fast as possible. And at, at the end of the day, it will save us money in the long run. And do it while we have money.
Thank you. So yes, it's quality of life. And how do we make it better for people in our community to actually have things to do? And stay out of trouble and give them good, good avenues to do it besides getting outdoors. And I think it's, it's perfect. So thank you for bringing this forward. I think we're kind of being played, though, because we just did this money and you guys had this plan already. So not, not that, this is a great thing to be played on. So I appreciate you guys coming back so, so quickly with this because sometimes the speed of government is not that fast. So I appreciate staff for doing this and CEO Regalo for supporting it and, and getting the money that we need for much neglected parks. And so I'm sure Supervisor Guardia is happy to see, you know what I mean? That the neglect will be fixed and that we can all be proud of our public parks. So thank you, guys. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
And Supervisor Ding, number 24.
This is the last one. I don't want to make Supervisor Rickman upset by pulling every consent item here.
It must be that seat, the seat that you're sitting in.
Oh, that's it. Mario, I want my seat back, yeah.
The floor is yours, Supervisor.
So right before, a little history. On, on this federal contract, so we have, for Supervisor Dollywall and Guardia, we have lobbying teams out there. We have two federal advocates in DC. We have a state advocate. We have Hillary Crowley, who's on staff here, who coordinates legislative activities. The contract we're discussing here is the Ferguson Group, works more with Fritz on water issues and so forth. I pulled this during the December because it came up on the agenda. It was right after the elections and, and the way I view our advocacy, advocacy groups maybe is a little different. I see them as an extension of not only the county, but of the elected representatives that, that we voted to send to DC, to Sacramento. And I think that Congressman Harder and Congressman Gray should have a voice in the process since they're the ones that are, you know, back there all the time anyway. So in the meantime, I've, I've reached out to Congressman Harder's office. We've had, we had a very good conversation, I reached out to Congressman Gray's office. And then we had a conference call where we went over some of our concerns and, and, and data boys for things that have happened in the past. This, this, this session coming up in DC, yes, there's a lot of unknowns. The one thing that everybody does know, it's gonna move at a faster pace than normal. That being said, with the amount of issues we have with the, the Delta water that have been kind of highlighted by President Trump's comments and Governor Newsom's comments, it's, it's the one area where I wish they would actually fight and disagree. I don't like them agreeing on, on certain things. We, we have to have our federal team in place. I think they're, they're, it's a strong team. They, they serve dual purposes with not only their grant writing, but also the water. But I, I thought, Fritz, you could go over some of the verbiage or insight into how we're redoing the contract to make it just one great all-star team.
Sure, through the chair, I do have a very brief presentation, Supervisor Ding. Provide some of the background. Good morning, Chair Canepa and Board Members. I'm Fritz Buckman, your Director of Public Works. The item before you is consideration of the Fourth Amendment to Agreement A1741 with the Ferguson Group for Water-Related Federal Advocacy Services. First, some, I'll provide some brief background. The Ferguson Group, or TFG, has provided water-related advocacy to the Department of Public Works in the county since 2008. Their current contract was approved by the board in February 2017 after a, a request for a proposals process in which they were the only proposer. The board has approved, since that time, three two-years extensions, the latest of which expires on January 31st. The proposed fourth extension is for 29 months, which would put the contract on a fiscal year timeframe. The cost for services is $13,000 a month, which I'll note has not increased in more than 10 years. The contract can be terminated anytime with 30 days' notice. In addition to advocating on water supply, flood management, and Delta issues in accordance with the county's legislative platform, TFG has provided extensive grant-related support to the county and other local water agencies. In addition to advocating on, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, brief computer hackup. Focus areas for TFG under the proposed 29-month extension include pursuing various federal funding opportunities, including groundwater sustainability, levee repair and rehabilitation, Phase Two of the Dream Groundwater Banking Project, the county's McCallamy Integrated Conjunctive Use Program, which involves a water right on the McCallamy River, and Delta abandoned and derelict vessel removal. Also advocating for National Flood Insurance Program reauthorization and reform. Advocating for the county's interest in the Delta and against the state's Delta Conveyance Project in coordination with the Delta Counties Coalition. Ensuring that the Army Corps' PL-8499 program is adequately funded and creates opportunities to accelerate levee repairs and restoration after storm damages. And also seeking Army Corps reform on its levee vegetation policy. Pursuing federal support to address a wide variety of invasive species issues. Monitoring rulemaking and legislation regarding Clean Water Act jurisdiction or the waters of the United States, which the county's been following closely for 15 years or so. Central Valley Project Operations, which is the, the federal water project in California, and drought-related legislation in the West. And finally, advocating for federal infrastructure programs, financing programs to support county and local water agency partner water and flood infrastructure improvements. Chair Canepa and Board Members, this- Chair Canepa and Board members, this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions the Board has, might have. The recommended action is to approve the Fourth Amendment to TFG's agreement and authorize and direct the Chairman of the Board to sign the agreement on behalf of the county.
Perfect, thank you. And I think this is great that, you know what I mean, this is also how government's supposed to work. You had questions and concerns and you brought it forward, so you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. And I'd also like to point out that the Ferguson Group, one of the other committees we have here is the Delta Coalition's Supervisors. It's five counties with its only focus being the water and the Delta. And obviously, the primary concern right now is, you know, proposals for the tunnel and shipping water south and whether we're going to have a through-Delta, you know, proposition or around the Delta. Ferguson Group serves as our lobbyist on that, so they're very well in tune with what our major issues are. I want to thank Director Fritz Buchanan for being on top of this and on top of me, making sure that we get this done because it is important. And sometimes you need to tell your electeds things they don't want to hear. So, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the topic? Okay. I just wanted to allow RC to come up. Thank you, Fritz, for item number 11. Even though you weren't punctual, we'll let you speak because I will give you the chance.
Well, thank you Chairman, I appreciate you. We are in dire need of a comprehensive plan in San Juanquin County. It's too many people dying. There's just too many people dying. People are dying of despair. So, I don't know if you all know what that means. They're just simply taking their lives because they feel there's no comprehensive plan that supports the wellness of themselves. And so, please forgive me, I'm in and out of meetings with CEOs and EDs and we're trying to figure out on how we can work with public health. Public health has to be urged in a way where they are talking with the city as well as HSA and any other hospital systems to come with a comprehensive plan for our mental health as well as our substance use disorder. There is confusion among the CBOs on where the county stands with fentanyl test strips and other harm reduction approaches. And it needs to be very clear. Also, looking at liability, and I heard that liability may be one of the causes on why the county is not making a firm stance. But I do want you to know that other counties in California are making a very firm stance on using harm reduction approaches to decrease the use of fentanyl, but also bring awareness, right? So, I don't know if any of you all have been able to be privy of any information or statistical data of the Community Health Needs Assessment, but it's gut-wrenching, right? We just received it on the 21st. And when you read it, you're going to fill it, right? And so, the epidemiologists here in San Juanquin County are seeing deaths that we've never seen before, right? Chronic disease is up, the stress, the level of not knowing where to go for the continuance of services, the continuity of care. So, we have trust in your interim director right now of public health. The CBOs trust that process, but overall trust in the community for public health is down, right? And so, I wanted to come to you all, to tell you all that we're very concerned. A lot of the leaders here in the county. And we need clear, concise strategy on how to support you all as well as support the families that we're supporting. And I just wanted to tell you all that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Valentine, can you address that, please?
Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, County Council, Madam CAO, Genevieve Valentine, Behavioral Health Director and Intrum Healthcare Services Director. So, item 11 is actually a behavioral health item with a one-year extension of our prevention programs. As the supervisors know, with the passage of Prop 1 in March of last year, all prevention services by July of '26 will transition from behavioral health over to public health. We are waiting on secondary guidance from the state to determine how those prevention programs will actually be funded for the county. Is it going to be through the California Department of Public Health, then allocations to public health to do prevention services, which does also include prevention for substance abuse as well as whatever direction our Board would like us to go on harm reduction strategies that would go from a behavioral health model, which has historically been treatment-driven, to a prevention model from a public health perspective, which will also include stigma reduction, suicide outreach, awareness, and so forth. So, our community is definitely concerned because there isn't secondary guidance yet of how efforts that behavioral health has done for 20-plus years are transitioning over to public health. But we are definitely staying on top of all the different conversations that are coming down from the state to us. We have approximately 14 months to have the full rollout. We have started workgroups within behavioral health as well as community meetings with the cities specifically. And public health is also trying to do their own set of community meetings, health assessments in order to bridge the two different departments and prevention together. So, behavioral health and public health. It's a brand-new world for this transition.
Well, I think that's the important part because, I mean, health and wellness is obviously at the forefront. But I mean, we've also had different entities doing the work. And so, how do we coordinate that? So, thank you RC for coming and hopefully that answered your question. And I think, you know, working together, we could figure it out because there's so many moving parts that I found. And I mean, I've been here for two years, but figuring it all out. So, Board, is there any questions or comments? It's good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for the consent, at this time, I would like to have a motion to approve 1 through 3, 5 through 9, and 11 through 24 because number 1 will be continued and number 10 is pulled.
Through the chair, number 4 has been continued already. And then, number 10 is requested to be pulled from the agenda by the Human Resources Department.
Thank you for the clarification. Can I have a motion?
So much.
And a second?
Second.
Vote, please. Motion carries by 2 to 0.
Mr. Chairman, I was wondering if, before we go to closed, if we could, if we have time to do our discussion item.
Yes.
Number 5, or is that?
County Council.
V1 is 6, yeah.
Right, we're good until, that's all.
Yeah, outside council has been told 11:30 per usual policy.
Okay, perfect. So, we'll move on to discussion.
Number 6.
Number 6, please.
All right.
You have the floor, sir.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where is Ms. Antonini? You please come forward. So, and I thought this was a good chance because I know Supervisor Rickman had some very legitimate concerns. And then, where we go into this process as well, too. The original request from the Board, which the Board wholeheartedly supported, was that of the mobile spay and neuter clinics. And you can correct me if I go, as I go along here, but this is the way I understood it is. What you found was, when you have a mobile unit, you could only do 10 spay and neuters. If you were out there on a mobile, if they did it on-site, they could do 30. So, that's a good thing. But at the same time, you know, the public was told that it was going to be a mobile unit. And there's been a member or two that have expressed concern what happened to the mobile unit. What we're really lacking is, we don't have the veterinarians and support staff to put on those, which is another thing I would like to open up for the discussion, especially after what just happened out in Clements with the Sheriff's Department and the horrific animal cruelty cases out in Clements. The question was, do we have a veterinarian? And, you know, the costs that we spend on subbing out for those services, maybe it's time we look at having a veterinarian on staff so that, you know, instances like what's happened out in Clements, we have our county veterinarian. Downtimes, they could sub out for one of our other priorities, which is a spay-neuter program, you know, throughout the county. What I'd like you to talk about first, though, is the offer from San Francisco SPCO.
SPCA.
SPCA, because dollar for dollar, it's an exciting offer. And then, how we're going to rectify some of the other situations.
Well, good morning, Chair Canepa, Vice Chair Dollywall, and Supervisors and staff. Thank you for taking the time today to speak to Jolene Maderas and I. Jolene is the Executive Director of Animal Protection League and she actually runs the clinic. So, she's kind of our expert at hand here.
She doesn't call and scream at me in the middle of the night, so that's why I called you.
Well, I know, that's my job.
I assign that to her.
We have had an amazing opportunity given to us from San Francisco SPCA. They have created a wonderful partnership with us. And in doing so, they've offered to give us 75 vouchers a month for a pilot program for four months. And with that, we can sell the vouchers for $20 to community members, residents of San Juanquin County. And San Francisco SPCA will pay the remainder of the spay and neuter on their behalf. So, it's an extraordinary opportunity for the residents of San Juanquin County. Although our prices are so significantly less expensive than at a veterinary office, they're still unaffordable to a lot of members. So, this is an even greater opportunity because it would essentially be of no cost to them. So, we have shared this information with Supervisor Ding and he thought it would be a wonderful opportunity for the supervisors to take part of the $20 purchase on behalf of your constituents.
Just to put it more, I like numbers. Spay-neuter, if you go to a private veterinarian, you're talking $600 to $1,200, depending on the weight of the avi... They do low-cost spay-neuter that goes anywhere from 325 to 400.
175 is our beginning price.
Oh, okay, Costco time, okay. But still, it's a lot of money. We invest $20 and we're getting the rest of those funds made up by, you know, generous conference contributions from San Francisco and its supporters. We cannot even begin to think about building more animal shelters. I mean, we have to, we have to address the root of the problem. And it's going to take, you know, years to realize it, but spay and neuter is the only way to get on top of this. And dollar for dollar, I think it's a great investment.
I agree. San Francisco SPCA has been
Yes.
a Stockton staple for many, many years because we used to euthanize a lot of animals at the Stockton Shelter. And I think that's the only way, and I mean, you see it in a lot of the homeless camps. The dogs reproduce and the cats reproduce. And that's the only way to help curb the animal population in our communities is through spay and neuter and education. And it's not cheap. And I think this is a win. Thank you for bringing this forward. I mean, I wish we could do a whole year instead of just four months. So, at this time, we have a, we have a Board member that would like to speak. Supervisor Guardia.
You know, I like boots on the ground. And, you know, I've known you, Jill, for quite some time. And often, you've reached out to me for assistance from the Fire Department to deal with some of our issues. And I commend you for, because not only, you know, people take positions for various reasons, but you love animals. And sometimes I think you're crazy, but I appreciate everything that you and your organization, everybody that's out to protect animals, what you do. And to me, this was a no-brainer. So, I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
I just have one follow-up question. So, obviously, it's for lower socioeconomic people. So, how do you decide who gets the now soon-to-be-free spay or neuter?
Well, the beauty of this opportunity that Supervisor Ding has created is that you guys would be receiving half of the vouchers to distribute to your constituents. And the remainder of the half, San Francisco SPCA will be passing out at the free spay, the vaccine clinics that they offer once a month.
Okay, so it, then it's by choice.
So, you guys would be able to.
Okay, because obviously, people that could afford it, obviously, you know, I mean, people kind of do weird things and we want it to help the folks that are most in need. So, I think that's important.
I'm giving everybody your home number and I'm telling them if they need a voucher, just to call you.
No, I fostered a dog and then my daughter adopted it the next day, thanks to Jill. So, but no, her passion is daunting and we love what you guys do in the community. And I think that's the only way to do it. So, any other further comments, questions?
Well, question.
Okay, good.
Are you in touch with different shelters in the county to?
How do we get in touch with them?
Are you in touch with them to spread this information that this program is available?
We actually, this is, it hasn't been approved yet. We're, so we haven't got in touch with anyone yet. But we certainly can. If you have a shelter you would like for us to reach out in particular.
Manteca and.
Manteca?
Yes.
We work.
Wait, yeah, go ahead, in tone.
We work actually very closely with, we work very closely with Manteca Shelter currently. We network with them and working with the unhoused and assisting with their spay or neuters as well.
Thank you. And I, I'm pretty sure this item is going to be approved, but once it does get approved, please share this information with them. Because I hear a lot of questions from the residents of Manteca about this program. Thank you.
Perfect.
Great.
Okay, we're going to open it this time at public comment. Anybody like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, coming back to Supervisor Rickman.
Thank you Chairman, and thank you Supervisor Ding for bringing it forward. And thank you both for being here. So, good morning. We had a great conversation yesterday for about an hour about this topic and also about the mobile clinic. And the mobile clinic, and just to let everybody know here, is still on the table, correct? That once you get the resources, you'll be able to get those out to the outlying cities, correct?
Yes.
No, I think it's a great program. I agree with Supervisor Ding, his reasoning for bringing it here. You all done a very good job. I know, I saw the numbers. And I know it's what, a little over 600 spay and neuters that have just been in the 5th District, you know, from Escalon to Mountain House to Tracy to Ripon and the unincorporated area. So, that's, that's great. So, we appreciate, you know, all you're doing for not just the Stockton community, but the community of all the communities here in San Juanquin County. And I just want to make sure, too, when the vouchers do come, that it's not just concentrated here in Stockton, but again, to up north, down south, you know, and wherever it may be. So, again, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I want to offer up my fellow supervisors for the dancing with the cats and dogs to be part of the next year's group.
We gave them a break this year.
Okay.
I've got a bad knee. You all know that. I've got a bad knee.
You've got a bad knee.
I've got a bad attitude.
Anyway, it's all for the love of.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Okay.
Except.
Have a motion and a second. Can we call for the vote?
Just to clarify, was that Supervisor Guardia who seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. Start spaying and neutering. Start spaying and neutering.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was the only discussion item, so we're 25 minutes ahead of schedule, so-
Yay.
We will take a break, take a break, and, or actually, do I need to, is there anything reportable that we're going to come back? Do I need to close this meeting, because we're going to reopen at 1:30, correct?
Correct, correct, yes, we're coming back at 1:30, and I anticipate there may be information report out. And we may have, I don't know if you, how long a break you want to take, we may have outside council already here. I'd have to check, they tend to show up a little early.
Okay, so then, after we're done with closed session, we'll come back out for board comments and any reportable action.
Correct, yes, that would be my-
So at this time, we're going to break for closed session, and if none of you are interested in coming back, we are doing a special meeting at 1:30, and I invite you all to be here for the opening of the 175th anniversary of San Joaquin County. So thank you for coming.
So, just so you know, Manteca, they bring a certificate. I crossed it off because Cassie said they weren't, but David said they were.
Okay.
County Council, can you report any closed action items that need to be recorded?
Certainly. So with regard to the lawsuit Marcus Fields versus San Joaquin, the motion was made by Supervisor Rickman and seconded by Supervisor Ding and by a vote of 5 to 0. The board approved settling that case, the terms and conditions of which will become available once all parties have signed a settlement agreement. On the lawsuit Jacob Severin versus San Joaquin County, Supervisor Rickman made a motion which was seconded by Supervisor Gardia and by a vote of 5 to 0, the board approved settling that lawsuit. Again, the terms and conditions of which will be available upon request once all parties have signed off on the settlement agreement. And then finally, with regard to CDWR versus All Persons Interested, a motion was made by Supervisor Ding and again seconded by Supervisor Gardia and by a vote of 5 to 0, the board authorized filing an opposition to this validation action that is pending in that lawsuit. That's all the reportable action.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to close our regular meeting and call the meeting into order for our special proclamation of San Joaquin County's 175th anniversary open. So, thank you all for coming. It's quite an honor to be here on this day to represent San Joaquin County. So, good afternoon, everyone. It is a tremendous honor to stand before you today as we gather to celebrate a truly remarkable milestone, the 175th anniversary of San Joaquin County. For 175 years, this county has been a cornerstone of California's story, beginning as a hub for agriculture, trade, and transportation, and growing into a thriving center of diversity, industry, and community. Through every challenge and triumph, San Joaquin County has exemplified resilience, innovation, and strength. Today, we not only reflect on our history, but also celebrate the people who shaped this county into what it is today. Generations of hard-working individuals, families, farmers, educators, innovators, and leaders, each of you has played a part in weaving the rich tapestry of our community. The county organization plays a vital role in serving our community through programs that support public health, safety, infrastructure, and economic development. These programs ensure that our residents have access to essentials, resources, opportunities, and a high quality of life. This anniversary is a testament to our shared journey, and it offers us an opportunity to honor the values that have carried us through resilience, unity, and an unwavering commitment to progress. Thank you to all who made this event possible and to everyone joining us to commemorate this historical occasion. Here's to 175 years of growing greatness and serving our community, and let us continue building on the foundation laid by those before us, working together to create an even brighter future. So, we have this 175th anniversary, and I want to thank all of the electeds that came out. I mean, obviously, the county, state, city, and federal officials that are here. And we also need to thank the 175th Ad Hoc Committee head by Rochelle de Borg, our clerk of the board. Sorry, brain fart. So, thank you for that. And we are having, it's really exciting what we've done. So, what we plan on doing is we plan on going to the cities before one of their council meetings to have little birthday parties close to when they were brought into the county. So, that's one of the goals. We're going to have a gala at the Hagan Museum and events kicking off the Historical Society and Museum with help from Philip Merleau, who's in the audience. And then, obviously, we're going to kick it off at the end of the year with the State of the County. So, at this time, we'll have Rochelle read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Canap. 175 years of history. This is a very long proclamation. Whereas San Joaquin County, established in February 1850 as one of the original 26 counties created by the California State Legislature, has a rich and storied history that reflects the pioneering spirit and resilience of its residents. And whereas San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors has served as a governing body of this county since 1855, initially with just three supervisory districts until 1874, expanding to seven districts from 1873 to 1875, and settling into the current five district structure in 1877. And whereas the first Board of Supervisors served from 1855 to 1856, consisting of John A. Tyler, who also served as the first board chair, C.W. Bradford, and E.C. Kelty, and Septimus Williams, setting the foundation for effective local governance in San Joaquin County. And whereas notable leaders have shaped the county's governance, including E.E. Trethewey, who served the longest term on the board for 26 years, from 1900 until his death in 1927, and George L. Barber, who served 24 years from 1975 to 1998. And whereas San Joaquin County has been a trailblazer in representation with Mary J. French becoming the first woman to serve on the board in 1922, after the passing of her husband George M. French, who himself served for 21 years. That was followed by Evelyn Costa from 1981 to 1992, and Catherine Miller from 2014 to 2022. And whereas the board proudly represents the cultural diversity of its constituents, with Richard Yoshikawa becoming the first Asian American to serve on the board from 1975 to 1984, Jose El Alva becoming the first Hispanic member from 1979 to 1984, and later appointed to the San Joaquin County Superior Court bench, and our newest board member, Sunny Dolly Waugh, who was the first known Sikh American to serve on the board. And whereas San Joaquin County's history is marked by resilience and progress, including contributions from Doug Willhoyt, who served from 1979 to 1994, whose great-great-grandfather, R.E. Willhoyt, also served on the board from 1875 to 1879. And our own Steve Bestelaridis, who served from 2009 to 2015 until the board appointed him Assessor Recorder of County Clerk. And whereas the Board of Supervisors has seen members rise to higher offices, such as Carmen Perino, Carlos Viatudua, and Norman D. Shemway, who was commemorated posthumously with the naming of Oak Grove Park in 2023, as Shemway Oak Grove Park, in his honor, highlighting the rich legacy of public service in the county. And whereas San Joaquin County has grown from a modest settlement during the California Gold Rush to a thriving region with eight incorporated cities, including Lodi, Stockton, Lathrop, Manteca, Ripon, Escalon, Tracy, and Mountain House. And whereas San Joaquin County is a thriving community, contributing significantly to the prosperity of California and the nation through its diverse agricultural production, strategic infrastructure, and a commitment to fostering innovation and sustainability. And whereas our residents, employees, businesses, local governments, and nonprofits exemplify our county's proud tradition of civic engagement and innovative spirit, working together to overcome challenges and celebrate shared achievements, underscoring the collective strength of those who live, work, and thrive in San Joaquin County. And whereas the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors continues to honor its commitment to the public, upholding the principles of good governance, transparency, and service to its diverse population. And whereas in 2025, San Joaquin County celebrates 175 years of growing greatness, paying tribute to the individuals, families, and organizations who have shaped its legacy. And whereas our residents, employees, businesses, local governments, and nonprofits exemplify our county's proud tradition of civic engagement and innovative spirit, working together to overcome challenges and celebrate shared achievements, underscoring the collective strength of those who live, work, and thrive in San Joaquin County. And whereas San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors continues, I apologize, that's a repeat, now therefore be it resolved that the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim 2025 as a year of our 175th anniversary in San Joaquin County, and encourages all residents to join in recognizing and celebrating this historic milestone through community events, education programs, and acts of service that honor the past while looking forward to a bright and prosperous future. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to all who have contributed to the development, governance, and enrichment of San Joaquin County, and reaffirms its dedication to serving the people of this great county for generations to come, embracing the pioneering spirit and resilience that have defined its history and will shape its future on this 175th anniversary presented this 28th day of January 2025. Chair Canap, at this time, I'd like to invite the board and our former board members to the well for a picture. With the exception of Patty, apparently, as moved by the board.
Quietly, remember the audience if I get picked on.
I can't wait for everybody to stand in three minutes. I'm going to vote.
Okay. Wait for them to get seated. At this time, there'll be presentations, so I'm not sure if anyone's here from Congressman Josh Harder's office. Congressman Adam Gray, Representative. State Senator Jerry McNerney, Representative.
Boy, what a day. I'm Gary Prost. For anybody who doesn't know me, I'm here, I have the honor of representing Senator McNerney on this day. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. He wanted me to present this, to present a certificate and to deliver this message. Greetings to the Board of Supervisors and the people of San Joaquin County. Unfortunately, my duties in Sacramento preclude me from joining you on this occasion, as we celebrate 175 years of San Joaquin County. People have been drawn to the place where the rivers meet in the middle of California for many centuries. First, access to freshwater, game, and food drew indigenous people, then the goldfields, farm fields, industry, and affordable housing drew successive groups of immigrants from literally all over the world. Today, we are one diverse community. Our diversity is our strength and will propel this great county to a bright future. I am proud to be part of San Joaquin County's history, and I look forward to our continued work together for the people here. So, I do have the certificate, if anybody... You're not going to be used?
Next up, Assemblymember Rhodesia Ransoms.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melissa Santos, and I have the distinct honor, thank you so much, distinct honor of representing Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom as her District Director. It is such an honor to be here today for this momentous occasion. The Assemblywoman is in session. I'm here on behalf to present a certificate of recognition from the California State Legislature. It reads, "To San Joaquin County, in honor of the 175-year anniversary of San Joaquin County, from its early days to the vibrant community it is today, this county has grown and evolved with resilience and spirit. With a rich history in agriculture, a diverse culture, and a growing economy, San Joaquin County has played a significant role in shaping the Central Valley and beyond. Here's to the history, the people, and the future of this incredible region. I am proud to represent Stockton, Tracy, and Mountain House in the State Legislature. Congratulations." Signed, Assemblywoman Rhodesia Ransom. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to start with the cities. First up, Escalon. Escalon doesn't love us. Oh, Rickman's district. What happened to... He says fifth district, best district.
It's a long drive from Escalon to here.
Can you get your folks in line, please? I mean, how come I don't? Next up, Lathrop. Lathrop's in the house. Do you want to speak? Kenjo, come on, dude. You gotta be faster than that.
Good afternoon, everyone. After, okay, oh, you got a high-tech raisin. Yeah, yes, yes. Yes, it is a pleasure to represent Lathrop, the 175th anniversary of our county. We tried to make the huge plaque, but it didn't come up on time, so we present it to you at a later date. But the diversity of our region cannot be overemphasized. That's why I'm standing before you today, that this man from distance away that speaks funny can come here and give a testimony concerning the diversity and the culture of San Joaquin County. I think that's something to celebrate, along with the 175th anniversary. Let's continue the good work that we are doing and maintaining the culture of the county. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. You want a quick photo up here?
Yes.
All right, next up is Manteca.
Okay. That's good, that's good, thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Board, fellow council members, or I should say council members, as I am not a council member. Unfortunately, no member of the Manteca City Council was unable to attend today, so you are stuck with me, the city attorney. In addition, in addition to being on my way home from work, I actually volunteered to do this because I'm about a four-year resident of the county. I live in unincorporated county in Supervisor Ding's district, and I work in Manteca. So, for the past four years, this is my home, and I was very fortunate to get to be here today to talk about San Joaquin County and the city of Manteca, and to represent Manteca here, because it's where we've decided to raise our family, where our daughter was born. And I'm now actually the president of the Board of Manteca Historical Society Museum, and so kind of it all came together, as much as I know you'd rather have one of the electeds. But, that being said, we do have a certificate to present to you all today, and with your acknowledgement that you'd like to come to one of our meetings, we suggest you come in May, as Manteca was founded in May of 1918. I don't think any of us were around then, but I digress, I don't want to be overly presumptuous. But needless to say, I will present the certificate of recognition to the county on behalf of the Manteca City Council, hereby celebrate San Joaquin County for 175 years of dedication. Established in 1850, the San Joaquin County has stood as a beacon of growth, resilience, and innovation. The milestone celebrates the rich heritage, vibrant community, and enduring contributions. Thank you all for having me today.
Everybody. Everybody needs an attorney, right? And then I'm going to shame seeing, when I see him at Sjaafka in a couple of days. So, thank you for coming, we appreciate your attendance. Next up, Lodi. Uh-oh, we're getting tag-teamed.
Oh, yeah. I apparently forgot to bring the wine, sorry.
We'll have a case next time.
Yes. Although Lodi is but a modest piece of this county, our partnership is great. The population of the San Joaquin County is roughly 800,000, and the GDP is $40 billion. But the relationships are innumerable, and the people priceless. I'm the third generation here in my family boasting a Dutch and Portuguese heritage, so yes, by default, we were dairymen. I try not to milk that joke too much. But upon various heritages, backgrounds, and occupations, we come together to build something great, something we can take pride in and call home. Although our cities are separate physically, the San Joaquin Board of Supervisors is what brings together all of our farmers, our manufacturers, construction workers, health workers, and others here in the valley, for representation, for safety, for the freedoms granted by the United States of America and our California constitutions. The city of Lodi is honored to be represented by this Board and looks forward to our current and future endeavors. And as our representative for Lodi, Supervisor Steve Ding, we expect you to continue your service of duty above, or service above self, and to not stop making really good prime ribs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You gotta say something.
I have to say something?
Yes.
Yes, you can read this.
Oh, actually, thank you, I'm used to doing that. So, I want to echo the sentiments from Mayor Bregman, and just thank you all for your service, because you all in some way serve Lodi, whether it's on the Council of Governments, whether it's the Air Resources Board, whether it's on the Rail Commission, whatever roles you play as it relates to our water, which is critical to our agricultural community. I want to thank you all for that service, because you represent the citizens that we represent as well. I will read the proclamation. Whereas San Joaquin County is located in the heart of the state of California, comprising eight cities, Escalon, Lathrop, Lodi, Manteca, Mountain House, Ripon, and Tracy, and almost 800,000 residents spreading across 1,426 square miles. Incorporated in 1850, it is one of the original 27 counties of California. San Joaquin County takes pride in its many jewels, such as the San Joaquin River, absolutely, after which it was named the McCullum River, which runs through Lodi, the Sacramento-San Joaquin River Delta, and here in Stockton, the port of Stockton. San Joaquin's first, San Joaquin's flat terrain made it a prime location for the Central Pacific Railroad to construct a rail line from Sacramento to Stockton and through the Altamont Pass to San Francisco. Many of those rail lines are still in use today by the Union Pacific Railroad, and if it were not for the railroad, Lodi would not be. So, we appreciate the rail. And whereas San Joaquin County boasts a rich heritage and a robust agricultural and farming economy, from the vineyards of Lodi to the vast fields producing almonds, milk, and walnuts. And whereas San Joaquin County is one of the most desirable housing markets, driven by buyers who commute to the Bay Area and beyond, seeking affordable housing, excellent schools, close-knit communities, and the high quality of life that we all share in. Now therefore be resolved, that in representing our mayor of the city of Lodi, we do hereby represent this proclamation to the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors in honor and celebration of the county's 175 years of excellence, growth, and legacy. The city of Lodi looks forward to continuing this great partnership that Mayor Bregman referenced in the next chapter of our county's future. Thank you all very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Stockton, please.
Well, thank you. I'm Michael Blower, I represent...
You both can speak.
I could see it. All right, well, I'm glad we are here to represent the city of Stockton, the county seat of San Joaquin County. And being a lifelong resident of San Joaquin County, it is truly my pleasure to be here to celebrate 175 years of being in existence. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Lee, the Vice Mayor of Stockton.
Well, first of all, I get a lot of invitations and things, and I thought I was coming to a party, which is why I'm not dressed in a suit, but I wanted to go, I sat back here for the last five minutes struggling internally, do I speak, do I not speak? If I don't speak, what does that mean? But I did want to get up and just say that I have a lot to learn, and I'm thankful that I have all of you to call on. I just want to highlight, just kind of contextualize the culture in which we're building this relationship with the city and county, with the new leadership. This weekend, I was on Facebook talking about the airport and my ideas for the airport, and Supervisor Ding texts me on my phone, and we get to talking, and we hopped on the phone, and we started talking about ideas. And it's just that relationship and that partnership that we hope to continue to build. And I'm super just excited for the future of the city of Stockton, and hopefully, we can build a healthy competition with the other cities. I'm looking at Lodi, Manteca, Lathrop, you know, let's build some healthy competition. But I'm so happy to be here to celebrate. I wanted to go after Blower, because he's more seasoned in these type of things, and hopefully, when they play it back, it made sense. But thank you for allowing us to be here to celebrate you.
Blower, he's my PIO, because everywhere I go, he goes, and we had to do the Blower selfie. So, thank you both for attending. Now, last but not least, fifth district, Tracy. It's not on my list, you forgot. Huh? Did I miss it? I've been out of alphabetical order, I'm sorry.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Dan Areola, I am the mayor of the city of Tracy. Just want to say thank you for allowing us to join you in your 175th anniversary. I'm here with Councilmember Dottie Nygaard. On behalf of the city of Tracy, as someone who grew up in this county, and who has actually served as a county employee for nearly a decade, and went on to be elected to mayor, it is clear that in San Joaquin County, the American dream is alive and thriving, and I want to personally thank you for the work that you were doing to ensure that it happens. And I want to extend a special thank you to Supervisor Rickman for his service to the city and to the county. And with that, on behalf of the city of Tracy, I have a certificate of recognition presented to the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors in honor of the 175th anniversary of growing greatness in San Joaquin County, celebrating rich history, culture, and diversity throughout San Joaquin County, evoking pride in our county's past while looking forward to its future. Signed, Mayor, on behalf of the entire city council, city of Tracy. Thank you.
Would you like to speak? Newly elected?
Yes, newly elected. My name is Dottie Nygaard. I am very proud to be able to participate in this really monumentous occasion. I've been 32 years in the county in Tracy, and I'm very proud to call it home. My kids are in Tracy, and my grandkids are now in Tracy. Go Bulldogs! So, again, I just am very thankful for this opportunity to, you know, build relationship, build partnerships... build partnerships, build collaboration, and together make something very proud for our state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan is also a county employee, so shout out to the district attorney for giving him time off to come and join us here. I forgot our newest city. I forgot Mountain House because I can't read, so I apologize for that. So, Mountain House could come up, please.
Hey, Chair. I just wanted to thank you for saving us for last best city. And so, this certificate recognition is presented to San Joaquin County in recognition of 175 years of dedicated service. We honor the San Joaquin Board of Supervisors, and this was written in, especially Robert Rickman, District 5. For their steadfast commitment to leadership, governance, and the well-being of the county. Since its establishment in 1850, the Board of Supervisors had played a vital role in guiding the growth and prosperity of San Joaquin County, ensuring that the needs of its residents are met with integrity and care. This certificate is presented on this 29th day of January 2025, recognizing the milestone anniversary with gratitude and appreciation in behalf of the county's newest incorporated city, Mountain House, on behalf of our mayor, Sue, and City Council.
Ripon, they were, didn't we say if they were here? Anyway, anybody from Ripon?
We have Sandy here. Sandy?
All right, put her on the spot. Our CAO now is gonna give a little spoof on Ripon here, so come on. Tell us how proud you are of your area, so, yes. Frank, do you want, huh? Frank's got enough love for everybody, so we're good.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable members of the board, on behalf of the great city of Ripon, home of the almond blossom, last full weekend of February, by the way, everybody, come on down. I want to thank you for this opportunity for coming. No, I'm kidding. I'm trying to like I'm beating Ripon. No, I just, you know, on behalf of Ripon, thank you very much for all you do. 175 years. I'd like to toast you all with Lodi wine for the next 175. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will. I'll go through the chair. Thank you.
You're up. You're up next. What do you have from Ripon?
On behalf of the city of Ripon, and I do proudly represent as well, I would like to extend my congratulations, and I am a proud, very proud employee of San Joaquin County. And being born and raised here in the county, it's, it's wonderful to see our 105th, 175th anniversary of the county, so.
Well, who's your favorite, real quick, who's your favorite supervisor? 5th District guy? I'm no longer in office.
It's an honor to be standing here before you. 2009 September, we kind of did the same thing. We had all the living supervisors, half of which are gone, that we occupied this building for the first time. As a product of immigrants, it's a pretty awesome thing to be sitting where you're from, and it's a great view, but a lot of responsibility. And so, I'm really grateful to this board, to the CAO. I've worked with a few, and she's as good as I've served with, and it's a pleasure to be still employed by the county in the Assessor Recorder Clerk's Office. Wish everyone good health and happiness, and have the privilege, there's a few other members that didn't make it, Supervisor Ornellus, Supervisor Sieglock, Supervisor Willhoyt, you probably forgot, Supervisor Mao. So, we, we do get together on occasion and break bread, and it's a really small fraternity. Enjoy it. And as I look at you, I'm, I used to, Carlos was the youngest. I used to be the second youngest, and now I would be the oldest, and time flies. Enjoy the journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Patty.
You have three minutes, Tom. Three minutes.
Start the buzzer with delay. Are we live?
Yes, you're on.
Well, it all began. Listen, just to be part of, to see the fabric of this county gathered here in the audience, and many got to speak, representing the city, and that's really that privilege we had and have as supervisors is this entire county. And just to be part of a little bit of its recent past, to recognize and, you know, that we acknowledge 175 years that we are here reflecting on that and where we've come and where we've gone. And then to see you five and the leadership we have of the CAO and the clerk of the board and our county council, you know, this county is in great hands. I'm really proud to have been part of it for a little bit that I was, but to see where we are, so that, yes, we've got the past, we're recognizing that great history, but it's really that future that we look forward to. So, congratulations to each and every one of you, the job that you hold. It's been a real privilege to know you, to work with you, and to be part of this great county and the legacy that some of the supervisors here and the names that were called out and the representatives that are here, it's really truly our pleasure. And congratulations, San Joaquin County. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Assemblymember Carlos Labuda.
Let me get this higher. First of all, I just want to say to all the supervisors and Mr. Chairman, this is awesome that you've got to bring in all of the folks, all these different cities here today, because what I've learned, you know, from the past and the future and the present is that it's all about relationships. If you don't have those relationships, I don't know how you're gonna get things done. But what I've learned, most important, is that when we're working together, we can get things done. Your staff here at the county are probably one of the best staff that I've, I've ever seen. And I'm talking the past. Every time that we call, when we need them, they're always there. And I know you guys all rely on that. That is the most important thing. I've always made sure, like even my former staff, is that the most important thing is not about a bill at all. It's about that constituency. That phone call, when people are calling, they're not calling here to thank you and pat you on the back. They're because they're angry, they're mad, they want to get things done. And you know what? Having these people here today is because those are the people that really do the things that we all want to see done. So, I congratulate of having us from here from the past. I'm actually wearing one of Supervisor Marankow's ties. I brought him on his honor. So, if any of you guys want to give me one of your ties, you know, to wear in honor, except, except Supervisor Rickman, you know, he'll probably give me some kind of like fuchsia tie or something. I'm okay with that. But, no kidding around, but I just wanted to say, you know, it's, it's an honor to be here with all of you, honored to be here with my former colleagues. This is great that you guys did this because it is well-needed, well-deserved, and I, at the end, I just want to say thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Supervisor Ken Vogel, who didn't want to speak, but we're gonna shame him also.
I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for doing this. This is very important for this county to recognize its importance in the state, and the real, real reason that we are here is the people of this county and all the people that are here today to support this. It is very nice to hear the names of the supervisors I have served with or are still with us. Supervisor Ruchdall, who I served with, of course, is deceased, so I do miss him. Again, our county is very, very important, the center of the state. We have several big highways to go through it, four small highways that go into the Mother Lode area. We are the center of a lot of things. We have a port, we have an airport, we have the railroads. We are places that get things done, so it's very, very important. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your energy. I counted either 15 or 16 times you got up to have pictures taken, so that's good. I'm impressed with you. I'm invested in this county. I'm a fourth-generation San Joaquin County. I was born here. The year is a secret. We don't talk about that. My father, grandfather, great-grandparents came in 1912. Earlier, Muckles and Nance came in the 1880s. We married into a family that came in the 1850s. So, San Joaquin County is important to us, not only is because we lived here, we dwelled here, we worked here, we raised agriculture here. I was honored to represent the 4th District, the North County and the East County, and I want to thank all the people here, from the cities, from the region, who've come here to honor San Joaquin County on its 175th anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Now, we are going to invite San Joaquin County Historical Society Museum Representative Philip Merlo up to say a few words. Amazing young man who represents our, our future and represents our past.
Also, questionable. So, hi, everybody. My name's Philip Merlo. I'm the Director of the San Joaquin County Historical Museum. I was asked to share five minutes or less about the history of San Joaquin County. For those of you that know me, five minutes or less is a challenge, but we're gonna try. So, and I think going back to 175 years ago, or 177 years ago or so, Charles Weber got off a boat at Weber Point, or what he called Weber Point, and he had a vision. And he was, he was the founder of Stockton, and he, he looked around and he saw tulip marsh, he saw swamps, he saw a seasonal floodplain that flooded every year. It was malaria-ridden, but he recognized the strategic importance of this land and saw that it was poised to become the gateway to the rest of California. And within a few years, he had founded Stockton. He was there, present in 1850 for the foundation of San Joaquin County. Of course, he wasn't on the Board of Supervisors. But by 1853, he had settled on a nickname for Stockton and San Joaquin County that would last for about 70 or 80 years, and that was the Gateway County and the Gateway City. And that was actually our first slogan. We use growing greatness today. At the time, the slogan and the nickname, what was used for marketing, was the gateway, the Gateway County. It was the gateway to the mines, it was the gateway to the lumber regions, it was the gateway to agriculture. And in San Joaquin County's first 20 to 30 years, of course, it was an agricultural powerhouse and shipping from agricultural products all over the state, mostly wheat and grain at that time, was being shipped all over the world courtesy of companies like Sperry Flower Products and the Union Mills. But by the 1870s, thanks to huge influxes of capital, innovations in, in reclamation technology, and the contributions of Chinese labor, the California delta started to become reclaimed. Irrigation districts around the county started to pop up. Farmers were cooperating to be able to pump water to where their lands were, and industrial manufacturing companies were starting to pop up to service that agriculture and that agribusiness. And the result of that was that in the 1880s, 1890s, the, the cost of land dropped, and you started to see the flourishing of small business agriculture and small business manufacturing. Companies like Holt Brothers Manufacturing, a lot of the first small farms that we start to see, many of which are still with us today, start to be founded in that time period. And with that, this region became known as a gateway to opportunity. And people from all over the world, whether that was Chinese from Guangzhou, Japanese communities from Wakayama and Kanagawa, Italians from Genoa and Lucca and Milan and Sicily, Portuguese folks from the Azores, Dutch from Van Groningen, Sikhs from Punjab, you know, Filipino communities from all over the Philippines, Mexican communities from Michoacán and Jalisco and Oaxaca, start to come here to this region with the hopes of owning land and pursuing their American dream. And as communities come, the economic bases grow of the various towns across the county. And San Joaquin County in the early 20th century was a place of thriving culture and wealth, and it was one of the wealthiest places in America at the time, is also one of the most cool culturally interesting places because it was so diverse. And over the 20th century, that, that cultural wealth and diversity has really been an incredible asset for our long-term economic base. And by the 1960s and 70s and 80s, you start to see people from around the country, developers, real estate businesses, finance industries, recognize that this is a great place to build a house and to build a home. And so, you start to see the, the growth of towns, whether it's Stockton and the growth of North Stockton, whether that's all the, the booms of the South County with, with the growth of places like Tracy and Lathrop and Manteca and Ripon and Escalon over the past 40 to 50 years. But you start to see this incredible growth in opportunity and people wanting to live here because of that, that affordability, but also that cultural wealth. And so, I'll leave you with this, that San Joaquin County is really interesting for a couple of reasons. For its entire history, I would argue it's been a gateway to opportunity for people to come here and, and pursue their version of the American dream. I also think that it's really important as a community that we recognize that our history is not just locally significant, it's not just significant regionally, or even at the state level, but it's actually, we live in a nationally significant community. When we talk about the histories of diaspora and immigration, the histories of innovation in, in, in engineering and heavy engineering with the development of the tractor, the development of the bulldozer, companies like Holt Brothers Manufacturing, to the, the really rich histories of organizing and the development of organized farm labor, to today, which is, you know, we live in, in an increasingly diversifying economy, and I think that till today, we actually live in a historically significant place. And I think that's important to recognize, and it's important for us to lean into because our heritage is our strength. And our heritage is something that we can lean on in telling our own narrative and telling our own story and changing the narrative about this county. Thank you.
Isn't, isn't he amazing? Isn't that just riveting to know the history and off the cuff? So, thank you very much for doing that. At this time, we're gonna open it up if anybody from the public would like to speak for, we're off two minutes apiece so that we don't go too long. If anybody would like to get up and say some words, you're more than welcome to come forward. No suckers? Really? About all these people? Oh, there we go. David Atwater.
So, about three and a half years ago, I was appointed by this board to be a commissioner on the Port District. And my history in Stockton goes back over 50 years. My grandfather started our family business in 1947, by the way, in the Port of Stockton. I just wanted to congratulate San Joaquin County on the 175 years. That's a big deal. And I'd like to say that San Joaquin County is the, is the fuel that powers the port. And the port takes that fuel and turns it into economics that benefit this county. And this county's position in the center of the state, I mean, everything in this county filters out through the whole center of the state, and it's quite an amazing thing. We develop a billion and a half dollars of economic opportunity for this area in the state of California. We participate worldwide in shipping. We have great shipping customers from Japan, the Middle East, to Turkey, you name it, all over the world, the Philippines, India, and around the globe. It's a fantastic place to be based, and we thank you for your participation in appointing three commissioners and being a significant part of the Port of Stockton. three commissioners and being a significant part of the Port of Stockton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're going to move on to the next part then of the, Rochelle, if you could lead for the 175th Commemorative Logo Art Contest, which is really cool. So take it away.
Thank you, Chair Canepa, members of the board. I'm excited to share with the audience here today and those watching online, the results of the Board of Supervisors 175th Anniversary Commemorative Logo Art Contest. So the current county seal was designed in 1962 by 14-year-old June Sands of Ripon, California. This was part of a local school art contest conducted by the Board of Supervisors. The scale in the center shows the balance between the industrial development and agriculture. The book at the base of the seal symbolizes the educational opportunities of the county. And the diverse transportation systems serving the county are represented by the airplane, ocean-going vessel, and railroad steamliner. Following this tradition, the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors recently conducted a similar contest of local middle and high school students to design a commemorative logo of our 175th anniversary. We received five entries, and we are so honored and fortunate to have June Sands, the original student artist, available to judge the entries, along with our own San Joaquin County Historical Society and Museum Executive Director Philip Merlow and Board Chair Paul Canepa. At this time, I'll share each of the entries that we received, concluding with the third, second, and first place winners. The first entry was submitted by 14-year-old Abigail Ebert. The artist's title is "175 San Joaquin County Logo" and stated the key theme of their logo is history and the train representing the creation of the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. The next entry was submitted by 12-year-old Annalisa Santo. The artist's title is "In God We Trust" and stated the design educates people on what San Joaquin County is known for: grapes and wine. The third place winner is 13-year-old Elise Sofia Topping. The artist's title is "175 Years Strong", celebrating the rich history and diverse culture of San Joaquin County. The tree symbolizes growth, resilience, and spirit. The cityscape symbolizes our urban development, and the hills and rivers symbolize our rural heritage, all of which represent a sense of pride of our past while also looking forward to a bright future. The second place winner is eighth grader Ella Kuschnik. The artist's title is "San Joaquin County 175th Logo" and stated the gold mine represents the gold rush of the 1800s, which is a key historical fact about California. The three plants represent the agriculture of our region, including the grapevine, cherry tree, and almond tree. Our first place winner is 15-year-old A. Vasquez. The artist's title is "How Far We've Come" and stated the clock represents the evolution of San Joaquin County, including its festivals, agriculture, engineering, and advancements in the economy. The clock marks 209, representing our area code. The artist hopes that his logo inspires others to recognize how far we've come and the hope of where we are going, because time never stops. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank the students who submitted their artwork. We greatly appreciate the time and effort that each student put into not only the design of the logo, but the thoughtfulness of their statements and what our logo should represent. I would also like to thank June Sands, Philip Merlow, and of course Chair Canepa for judging the entries. We are currently working with our ISD department to develop the winning artwork into a commemorative logo that we will use throughout the county during our year of celebration. Chair Canepa, we had our third place winner Elizabeth Topping, RSVP, and I just want to confirm if Ms. Topping is in the audience here today? I would like to invite Elizabeth Topping and the Board of Supervisors to the well to please take a picture. She's too embarrassed to come down. We won't make her come down, but we really appreciate Ms. Topping, your submittal today, and congratulations on being our third place winner. Chair Canepa.
Thank you. Greatness does grow here. Thank you for coming. That means a lot to me that you showed up. So hopefully we can get a picture. And so next, we will move on to closing remarks, and we will start with our newly elected Supervisor Guardia.
I just want to say I appreciate that history lesson. It was quite moving and a lot of information was shared. And I too am a multi-generation resident of Stockton, and I'm proud to represent District One in San Joaquin County, which encompasses most of the city of Stockton, where most of my family lives now and are from. But, you know, what I'm proud of, San Joaquin County is a very diverse county. And like you mentioned earlier, and probably going to refer to you a little bit, that's what's great. I went to a high school that was, which was Franklin High School, which, you know, we were Bulldogs quite a bit, but, yeah, Go Jackets. But it was a very diverse high school, and I'm very proud of that. And it taught me a lot of life lessons. But San Joaquin County is a professional and blue collar community. We have produced astronauts from Franklin High School, actors, musical legends, and many professional athletes. We feed America. With our agriculture, we produce around $3.2 billion a year. We get our name from the San Joaquin River. And we need to continue to fight to protect that. The Delta is our jewel. And I'm committed to protecting the Delta. And the, you know, the people of San Joaquin County are proud to call ourselves 209. And I see that in the artwork, and that's pretty cool. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Dolly Wall.
Thank you, sir. I would like to extend my congratulations to the residents of this county, San Joaquin. I want to thank our former supervisors. Thank you so much. All the elected officials from eight cities, our state and federal representatives, Sheriff Pat Witherow and his team, District Attorney Ron Friedas and his team, thank you so much for keeping our county safe. As a first-generation immigrant, it's a blessing to be resident of this county, and it's honor and privilege to be part of this board. I want to thank our staff. I want to thank our county administrator. Let's continue to work together and make this county better, not only for the current generation, but for the generations to come. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Rickman.
It's a beauty before age. Is that what it is? No, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody that showed up here this afternoon. You know, thank you all to the electeds, many of you that I work with on different committees, and of course, the residents and our past supervisors. Those of you that know, know, for the last four years, I carried Supervisor Patty, and I still have some back issues for that. But no, hey, all joking aside, you know, San Joaquin County is a great place to live and raise your family. I was born, raised here. My daughters are fourth-generation Tracy residents, in fact, fourth-generation Bulldogs, which those of you that don't know, Tracy, hi, God, I don't know how many times we just crushed Franklin.
Something in the water.
But no, you know, I can sit up here all day and talk about, you know, the history of South County, of San Joaquin County as a whole. You know, I remember growing up in Tracy, and when it was 15,000 people. And I remember graduating from high school when it was 91 and, you know, seeing these new homes being built. And you're like, who the hell is going to pay for a house for $165,000 in Tracy? And now look. And, you know, you look about, you know, you talk about the culture that we have here in San Joaquin County. And I can, you know, the mayor of Lodi, I mentioned, you know, the Portuguese culture. And of course, I'm Portuguese, at least half Portuguese. And my family came out here in the late 1800s and started by milking cows and, you know, then bought a dairy. And, you know, my dad started the family. We came here from Arkansas in the 20s. Worked at Heinz. Those of you who remember Heinz here in South County. And from there, you know, my granddad worked for, you know, Union Pacific and the railroad. So if you look at all the different industries that we started with, ag, railroad built many of our towns here to where it is today, you know, the Fortune 500 companies, the industrial side of the manufacturing that we're getting here in San Joaquin County. But we still pay homage to our roots, our agriculture is still the backbone of our economy here in San Joaquin County, being over a $3 billion economy. But what makes San Joaquin County such a great county is the people. And we take pride living here. We are proud calling San Joaquin County home. And again, I just want to say thank you all for being here. I want to say thank you to the residents and, you know, for putting me in this position that I'm in. I'm very blessed to represent the fifth district, of course, but San Joaquin County as a whole. So thank you, and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Supervisor Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. San Joaquin County is about characters, personalities, stories, diverse history. You know, I grew up in Stockton. My grandfather was a local three-union steelworker at Holt Brothers. So I'd hear, you know, those stories. My grandfather bought Tejans Barber and Beauties play down on Main Street, growing up in Stockton. I grew up on Main Street eating, you know, hamburgers on special occasions at the lunch counter at Woolworth's, where Crest is downtown. You know, I wish Doug Willhite was here so he could tell us what it was like when San Joaquin County was first founded 175 years ago. I got involved in politics because of Doug Willhite. He was a gentleman. He, Decorum was his middle name. And, you know, I followed him. He'd call me back in. I was going to school up in Cheeko, and he'd need help, and I'd drive down and help him out. But, you know, it was Doug Willhite and George Barber and Silva and Costa. And I was always in awe at the professionalism. You know, we have stories here with Ben Holt, but Phil, you've forgotten a very important one. And I wouldn't expect, being from Franklin, you would know this. But if you went to Stagg State, Amos Alonso Stagg, the inventor of modern-day football. You know, very important to remember that. The stories I hear, you know, I try when I meet someone, you know, we get down to business, and then I want to know. So tell me about you. Yesterday, I had the privilege of, I sat down with Elena Serna to talk about a couple of different issues. And I said, you know, her brother was, you know, Joe, who was mayor of Sacramento, you know, back in the day. I said, how'd your family get it started? She starts, she told me a little bit about that, which was amazing in itself. But then she starts talking about the history of Lodi, which, you know, she was a history buff. 1904, Lodi on Sundays was a dry town. They had a one deputy who lasted three hours on the job. His job was to drive up and down Sacramento on School Street and make sure nobody was drinking. The problem is, they hired a kid who was 17. He had so much fun by the third bar, they fired him. And that was the end of his career. So I love the stories. I've always wanted to create one more committee and called the Council of Elders, because I'm really concerned that, you know, if we don't pin all these to paper, the stories for those that came before us, we'll lose them. And they're very valuable. So I want to thank the elected officials who showed up and the committee members who take great pride in this. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you. It's an honor for me to be able to be Chair this year. So it just goes to show you, I'm a son of a car wash family. You know, my parents were, my dad was Italian and my mom was German, Swedish, Norwegian. So I'm the melting pot that is called San Joaquin. We fed, you know, off of two car washes, my whole family. And it's part of what makes me me. It's, I don't know everything, but I know enough people that know what's going on and how it's going on. So I think that's the most important thing, is that we need to keep the past alive. And we need young people like Philip, who is just masterful, to hand the baton off. So we often ask ourselves is, what are we doing to society? I mean, cell phones have made us more and more dumb. Everyone says that we're smarter than a fifth grader. But our reliance on those, instead of the stories of our past and what makes our county great, I think is seen here today. So I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank Rochelle for putting together this meeting for us, for our kickoff. I think it's huge. I want to thank everybody that's worked in the county in the past. Who's been a county resident that makes San Joaquin County great. Rochelle's even got little potted plants out there, which, because our theme for this year is 175 years of growing greatness. So you're more than welcome to take a little, I don't know what you call it, a little...
It's a growing greatness flower pot. And I do want to acknowledge Chelsea Brighton Booker for the idea.
Okay, so that's, those are the things. Thank you, Chelsea. She's new to the sixth floor. And it's what makes the county great, is obviously the 8,000 employees that we call the county. I try to treat them with dignity and respect. Sometimes I get a little passionate. But I think everyone's passion up here can be seen. Everybody that's in the audience brings a piece of that history, and that's what we're going to try to do this year, is celebrate 175 years of San Joaquin County. So thank you for all the electeds and all the people, and the DA and the sheriff and folks from Tracy. Thank you for coming from all over the county to celebrate this opening. There's more things to come in the year, and I hope you are able to attend those events. We will be coming to your cities to celebrate growth and birthdays as we go through the year. And then obviously, we're going to have a gala and then the state of the county. So I look forward to celebrating the rest of this 175th year with all of you. So in that, I will close the meeting. Thank you very much.